The foreseeable future for those of you watching at home. First is public input. Do we have anybody who wants to speak? If you could identify yourself and I will call on you. But we don't have that many visitors, right? So anybody in the room who wanted to public comment on anything? Okay. So board member comments. I will invite board members. Have any announcements or comments you want to make tonight?
Yeah, I had a very nice meeting with Jamie Eldridge on Monday. Just sort of trying to ask him some questions about infrastructure and sort of what, you know, getting the ball rolling on some, some questions about what we could do in the future. So it was good.
Jim, where's Zach? Anything? I just want to congratulate again Don and Nancy McPherson for the event they had at Rennett Man in honor of July as, I'm going to get the word wrong, airfield recognition.
Aviation month.
Aviation month. But they were, they were, you know, sort of highlighted because they, the state asked them to host it. It was a great event. Well turned out. It was impressive how many people came. It was, I had no idea how many small municipal private airplane, airports there are in the state. So they were well represented as well. So it was just a great event. And again, thanks to Don and Nancy for doing, always being a great job at the airport, but particularly for that event was really lovely. And I want to remind people, the cultural council's hosting a series of events this week. But on Thursday, starting, I believe, at five o'clock at Lake Boone, hopefully the weather will stop raining long enough. There's a free concert. It should be really fun. Bring a picnic dinner if you'd like. And it's five to six thirty, I believe. Information's on the website. That's all I had. So we're going to start with appointments. Andy Riker?
Riker.
Riker. You knew I was going to pronounce that wrong, right? Interested in joining the Board of Trustees at the library. So thank you for coming tonight. Thank you, Marcy, for also coming, the Chair of the Board. Andy, you just want to introduce yourself, sort of what your interest is in being on the library.
Sure. I'm originally from Connecticut. My first job while I was still in junior high was working at my town library, making something like three sixty-five an hour, working four hours a week. Super fun. It wasn't the most glamorous job, but I really did enjoy it. And ever since everywhere I've lived, I've kind of taken the library to heart and did my part to, to promote the library in any way that I possibly could. When this opportunity came up, I thought, what a great opportunity to do just that. So here I am.
That's great. I should have said that there's an opening on the Board of Trustees following Laura Reiner had stepped down. So, and it is our job. We got a recommendation from the trustees. I don't know, Marcy, do you want to add anything?
Sure. I mean, we're thrilled with that Andy wants to participate, but we're also thrilled with the robust response we had. Generally, we had three candidates this round who wanted to participate, which I think is amazing, frankly. And we encouraged everyone to consider running for something next year during the election cycle. So it was really nice to see that broad-based community participation.
That's great. And this will be the, filling the position through the next election, through next.
Correct. Yeah, so we did Kathy's vacancy last month. And so we will be a full board after tonight or after the swearing, and I guess, which will be wonderful.
Great. Board members, any questions? Yes, Jim?
Well, first of all, Andy, thank you for stepping forward. No questions. But very nice to see someone who has spent time working in the library, stepping forward to be a trustee. Just curious, this is the second appointment in as many months where we're not doing it the way the charter says to do it, through a joint meeting. I understood the first time that that was because there was a miscommunication, but I'm surprised it's being done this way. Why is that? And can we eventually get back to doing it? Now that I'm anticipating more vacancies. Can we get back to doing it the way that the charter wants it to be done?
My understanding was that we believe that with Marcy here representing the board, that that was enough of a, she represented the full board being here. But, but you were thinking that it should be more a majority of the board?
So in, in, in the past, we've certainly done it that way when we had to, when, for example, the other board couldn't get a quorum to our meeting. But the effect is that, frankly, it deprives the other trustees of a vote. You know, they could, in theory, be here voting the same way that we are as a joint superboard.
Right. So we talked about that, Jim, at our meeting. So we just met this past Thursday, which is part of the reason why it's just me tonight, because we had to get this on the agenda Thursday evening or Friday morning in order to have it appear for you guys. So we talked about it and we just, we could not get four people from the group to promise that they could be here tonight. And it didn't make sense to me to wait another month if I knew I could be here and Andy knew he could be here.
Okay.
So that's why we did it this way. I, I want to say if it were January, it probably would have been a little bit of a different situation. But it's a, it's a little more challenging to get people to participate in my estimation.
So it's similar to the situation we've had in the past, where you just can't get a quorum of a.
Correct. And just so you know, we all did officially vote at our meeting. I mean, we had a robust discussion. All three candidates came. They were able to make a presentation again. We had, you know, fifteen or twenty minutes of dialogue after they, we took a vote on who we wanted to, you know, so it was.
What I am trying to, I, I understand, what I'm trying to sort of, I guess, put down a marker on is let's not confuse and mistake ourselves and pretend that this is the way it's supposed to get done. The way it's supposed to get done, because, because we had this discussion at the last meeting.
Right.
It's quite clear it is a joint meeting on the same night, the two boards together. We got, sometimes you do what you got to do. But this will not be the last time that this board fills an appointment on an elected board, whether it's the assessors, Board of Health, whatever. And, you know, small errors like this sometimes tend to be mistaken for the SOP, you know, after a while. So let's just be careful. That's not where we go.
And if I may, I would recommend that going forward, even if you don't have a quorum, whatever members could make it should actively participate in the discussion going forward.
But so then we thought that that would then be a violation of open meeting law, because we would have not posted it as a public meeting.
Well, you could still post it. But then if you don't have a quorum show up, it's still posted and you're, the charter actually says the remaining members are available to vote. So at least if it's posted and you have three out of the seven.
That was our misunderstanding. We believed we had to have four or it didn't make sense to do it. So, and we, I actually also understood it as an either/or. We would be abdicating our joint voting participation, but we would still be bringing forth the candidate that we had chosen. So that's the way I understood it. But it's good to have the clarification.
When you've got questions like that, that's who you ask.
Right. I, I really thought the way we talked about this at the last meeting, frankly, was my understanding that it was, we, it was perfectly acceptable to do it this same way again, is what I understood from the last meeting.
And hence Jim's, that was well, well thought out that we, you've now raised this, so we will be more.
Yeah, I just don't want this to be the SOP.
I understand.
Right. And particularly for us, I mean, because we're the ones who are more likely going to have that situation rise up again.
Right.
Right. Thank you.
Right. If you come to us with a.
Then we'll worry it again.
Right.
Right. So, so any questions of our candidate as opposed to process?
No, I just want, I'm sorry.
I just, I just want to say thank you, you know, for volunteering. And, and I did see that you have a slight tech background, which I'm incredibly excited to hear, and I'm sure others are as well, which, what doesn't go unnoticed in some of the needs of our, of our town. And I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, how you work collaboratively to really advance the library, because I think it's, it's ready to do that.
Great.
And I'm excited to, to see what you can do.
I'm just echoing everyone else's stance. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. So I will accept a motion. Oh, do we have motions? Good time.
I will move to appoint Andy Riker to, you got that right, right?
Yep.
You did. Andy Riker to the random library Board of Trustees.
Until the next.
Until, effective immediately until the next election.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I thank you again. And, and I forgot to sort of say in the announcements, I mean, the library looks fantastic. I got to go in on the first day it was open last week. Summer hours, folks. It's, it's even open on Mondays. Oh, my God. Radical. But it looks fantastic. So you, you walked in a perfect time, Andy. It's, it's really, what an exciting time. So, but thank you for stepping up again.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. So our next appointment is for Francis Ramsbottom to our new Building Commissioner and Facilities Manager. I believe that is you.
Yes.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
Welcome to Stowe.
Thank you.
So you are being recommended by Denise to, to be our new Building Commissioner. Do you want to tell us a little bit about yourself? I know you've been in Acton, but.
Yeah, well, yeah, I've worked in Acton for fourteen years. I've lived in Hudson for about twenty-five years, I think. So this is like a dream commute. I've enjoyed my time in Acton. I like the, the work. So I think this, I'm kind of really looking forward to working in Stowe. Should be nice.
Denise, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'll just say, so we received a number of resumes. I put together an internal working committee to conduct the search. We interviewed five candidates, narrowed it down to a few. And then we all unanimously selected Frank as our top choice. We made some phone calls, checked references. As I noted in my packet, I spoke to the state inspector who raved about him. Actually, Craig Martin thinks very highly of Frank, thinks he'll be a good fit here and work well with everybody. We were very impressed with his code enforcement background, with his, we figured if he can handle Acton, he can handle Stowe. A lot of similarities on a smaller scale. But just think he'll be a really good fit here for us.
Great.
Thank you.
One question I had, do you have, did you have staff in Acton?
I did. I had a full-time inspector and a part-time inspector. We're a little busier, though. I think we issued twelve or thirteen hundred building permits last year.
Yeah.
I don't, I forget what the number was here. I remember looking it up.
Three hundred and thirty-four last fiscal year.
Yeah.
So there you go.
You just checked today.
It probably works out similarly.
Yeah. Right. So I just, you know, always want to make sure, you know, come to a smaller place, yep, well, it's just us. You know, I mean, you got them, so, you know. Great.
Other questions or comments from folks?
Welcome aboard. Is it, and you go by Frank?
Frank, yeah.
Right.
Nice to meet you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks to meet you as well.
Thank you.
So I'll take a motion.
I will move to appoint Francis Ramsbottom as our Building Commissioner slash Facilities Manager. Is there a particular term? No.
I'm trying to find the motions. I can't get on the server.
I have through May thirty-first.
Through May thirty-first.
To the annual appointment, right?
Yes.
Through May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
And subject to annual appointment thereafter.
Subject to annual appointment thereafter.
Thank you.
No further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Great. Welcome, Frank. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And when do you start?
He's going to start Monday.
All right.
Yay.
For all those people who are wondering what's happening with their legal permits pending, you know, including my neighbors, I'll just say.
Well, Craig is doing some crossover, so he's still working for us a couple of hours a week to keep things going. He's going to spend some time with Frank once he gets on board to onboard him and just show him around, talk about the projects, the capital projects that are, that we started, just to really hand things off.
So terrific.
Did I need to fill anything out for you so I can start Monday? Or am I else?
Come see me Monday morning.
Okay.
We'll do it on Monday morning.
When do you start? Eight?
She starts. She starts early.
Yes. You would be eight to four-thirty.
Okay. That's whatever the time is. It's fine.
Yep. Yep. Yes, you can stop by and see me Monday morning.
Very good.
We'll take care of all that.
All right.
All right.
Need enough time for the commute.
Yeah, right. Yeah, there's that traffic between Hudson here.
You might want to leave like seven fifteen. Make sure you've got your.
Yeah.
And none of our Dunkins are drive-through.
Those are drive-through, a few hundred feet from where I live.
Yeah, there you go. An even better commute, right? And we're not going to have the coffee discussion.
All right.
Right. All right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next appointment is for Nick Whalen to the position of full-time highway and tree grounds driver laborer. I don't know, is Nick on? Yes. No. We don't expect him on the call, right? Okay.
Steve is on if you have questions. But Nick has been, I'm sorry. Trying to get the motions now and I'm.
That's right.
So Nick has been with us for a short time now, and he was highly recommended to fill in the full-time position, one of the full-time positions that is vacant.
That's great. Does anybody have any questions for Steve? Do we need to do that? I think we can just move ahead to the motion.
Actually, I was going to ask, do you want one motion for both Mr. Whalen and Mr. Arsenal?
Oh, sure. Yeah, we could do that. So, and then the other, uh, non, appointment is to, I'm missing his name. Where am I missing?
Raymond Arsenal.
There it is. Raymond Arsenal for full-time highway department, highway, tree grounds, driver labor.
Yes, so.
Right, same position.
Yes. So if I may, so one of them was the new position created at town meeting that will also, so the new job description includes a cemetery for both of these positions to assist with cemetery work. The first position became vacant when we promoted Derek up to the mechanic. So he was the highway tree ground driver laborer. He's been promoted to mechanic, which freed up his position. That's why there are two being appointed this evening.
Great. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, I will move to appoint Nicholas Whalen and Raymond Arsenal as full-time highway tree grounds driver laborers.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Great. Thank you. Thank you, Steve, and thanks to Nick and, great.
Very much.
Thanks for coming. So now we have a proposal amendments to the police uniform clothing and individual equipment policy for the police department. And we have Chief Salis. And I'm going to see, I'm cutting, I'm just not going to remember. I'm sorry. Lieutenant Trane here with us. So Chief, do you want to start on this? Can you just explain what we're doing?
Okay. So there's, I'm going to stand up first.
Yeah, please.
So there's two policy, two parts to the policy change that I'm looking for. One is on how we carry our duty belt, or our duty gear. And the other one is for our, our existing tattoo policy. So I'm going to start off with the duty gear first and then answer all your questions on that. And then I'll continue on after that, if we can do that in two different parts.
Sounds good.
So traditionally, you'll see police officers working the road. And there's been a slow transition from wearing a traditional uniform, which is what I'm wearing tonight, which is when you have the vest underneath your, your shirt, which you can hear my vest, and all the duty gear carried on your hips. I wanted to show what this looked like, and it's a lot of weight. Okay? So give me a second here. Mike, I can just throw it on. Pull it up. Yeah, I'm going to pull up. When I do this, I want you to feel, this is where your traditional belt is. You can pass that around. And this is what we carry.
I'm going to believe you.
Oh, my God. That's really heavy.
Yeah.
That's really. And that's on your hips.
And that's on our hips.
Yes.
So we carry this for our total number of our career for around.
Thirty years.
Thirty years. And it weighs on you. We've had officers at the end of retirement go get hip replacements because of the weight that's on it. So what we've done a couple of years ago, this, Chief Bosworth allowed us to switch to a regular, just carrying an outer carrier vest. So we wear a shirt, a uniform-style polo shirt under, and then we put this over. So when we're in the station, we can take this off. Or when we're not needing a vest, we can take it off. As you can see, it looks just like my uniform shirt, but all the, and I would still wear the traditional duty belt. This is what the vest weighs.
One of the advantages of this also is wearing a vest like Mike's wearing now, which is the way I wear it too, in the summertime, it's incredibly hot.
Oh, yeah.
You're sandwiched, and you can see how much that weighs. So that's sandwiching you in it. And when you get out of a car on a day like last week, you're just sweating the moment you get out of the car. So the reason why this was developed is like what the chief said. In the station, you can take it off. You can get a breather. You can let your body breathe. It weighs a little less.
What we're asking to go to is we want to move the duty, all the duty gear off your hips and then put it up on the vest. It's the same, it's the same shirt, except your gear is now up a little bit. It takes everything, again, off your hips, puts it on your shoulders, same amount of weight. And after a long career, you, you won't have as many, you won't have as many hip problems. I am very aware of the appearance. We try to want to keep that community policing appearance down. But as you can see.
It doesn't really look that much different, like on the front versus, because it kind of blends right into it.
Right.
Because your, your gear is now up here. And we do that, it's still accessible for us. It's the tools. It's like a carpenter's tool belt. And we still get all that access. Again, this is what we'll end up wearing.
And you can take it off.
And then we can take it off if we need to take a break in high temperatures. It's still pretty heavy, but now you.
But it's coming down. It's on your upper body.
And I am, and again, so I've seen other towns, they have a really high tactical looking, looking vest. This is not one of them. This is just moving the gear up three inches from your, off your waist onto the.
Another thing too, like the chief and I, we're not real big guys. We don't have a lot of space to put this around us. So like, we're running out of room with all the gear that we get. For me to get to my taser, it's way over here and it's a hard reach.
Yeah.
So this makes tools more available, because it's just like right in front of you.
And we are getting more equipment. We are, this is a, a few of the items. We would still carry, the officer who has been trying this on still carries, and we would still carry our firearm actually still on our waist. It would still be in a secure holster. We are still adding more equipment. We still have, some officers carry tourniquets. And we are looking at, you know, hopefully eventually some body cameras too. So we're going to keep adding more and more. And as tools keep going on and officers want to change things, some officers carry a flashlight on. We're always supposed to carry a flashlight. Even in the daytime, you go into a building that's dark, you want to have that flashlight that's available to you. So this is what I'm asking for, for the, the first thing. You guys have any questions on that stuff?
Seems pretty obvious.
I know. That's amazing.
Can we just ask, because I'm colorblind? It's more my deficit than your presentation. That's a blue vest, correct?
Yes.
Or is this black?
No, this is, we, we go NYPD blue. I'm sorry, LEPD blue, sorry. Dark, dark blue. Everything's dark blue. We're not doing black. It does look. So this is Officer Fitzpatrick's. And I don't know if you saw on social media that we rescued some ducks the other day. He was wearing this and you didn't take it off before you. So this place is a little bit dirty right now. But the black would be this, and this is the, the blue. And this is blue. And mine is blue.
Yeah.
So the only thing I'm not understanding, Chief, is what's the downside of this? I don't really see one, other than I guess maybe the appearance a little bit.
So that's, that's a lot of it is the concern, is the appearance of it. I think there's the health benefit and the safety, the health and safety of the officers is important. And I want to be able to continue to have officers working for us for a long time without any health or safety issues.
Is there any change in accessibility, swiftness with which you can reach the equipment?
Nope.
You don't think you can get to the taser quicker with that?
Actually, I can probably get to the taser quicker with this. But officers will train in it. They'll, you know, they won't, they'll have to continue their training, because we, we train in how, we perform how we train. So we end up, if you're going to go to this, you'll train in it. Our use of force, Defense Tax Coordinator already checked this out and he approved it. That was John Butler. So everything, everything works. You're just a little bit higher than on your actual belt.
Right. Yeah. I think. And, and since you raised the sort of different body types, I mean, does it, does it work for all body types in terms of size and gender?
So they make vests for women as, as well as they do for men. And, you know, actually, all of our vests are custom-made. Oh, so they make vests for women as well as they do for men and, you know, actually all of our vests are custom made. So we go down, we get measured and then they make them and then we get, we get issued our vests. So this actual, have our inside here is what gets made and then these come in small, extra small, large, medium. It all depends on what you want. Again, it's just moving, the policy states that it's on a duty belt and now it's just gonna, I just wanted to reflect that they can go ahead and freely wear it. And I'm hearing a lot of positive feedback because they're like, oh, I don't have to, if I'm in the station writing a report. If I'm sitting with my duty belt all day, trying to sit in this chair.
Yeah.
And I still have all that weight on. That's a long time, especially when you work 16 hours. I can tell you that I've worked many 16 hour shifts and you come out and you have marks all along your hips and everything, so.
Does that make driving the car harder or easier or?
I've not heard one way or the other. I couldn't imagine it would make it harder because it's still up against you. You still have to wear a seatbelt when you're in the cruiser. So everything's still contained.
Okay. I don't really see any downside.
I have two questions for you, Chief. Is this an optional uniform for officers? Or is it, this is what you're asking our officers not to wear?
Nope. It's, it's going to be optional and if they want to make the purchase, it's, it's coming out of their existing clothing allowance. There's no, there's not going to be any additional cost. If the officer wants to go ahead and do this, then they can go ahead and do it. Again, the vest, we provide the vest as a town. So everybody who is a police officer gets a vest. But it's the carrier. That's what really, that's the style to go ahead and do this. And you might see, there's some actual variations where the officers are ordering different badges. They're the same badges, but they're lighter and then they get permanently mounted to, to the vest carrier. So they don't have to worry about the, the badge going, you know, flying if they're involved in something. So there may be, you may see this more embroidered or more tight on the vest, but that's the only variation.
You have a second question?
Yeah, it's a question for you. Are we going to be discussing this now or wait until after the tattoo policy as well?
I think we'll do the whole.
Both together?
Yeah, right. I mean, but if you want, oh, in terms of just discussion, we're supposed to do questions for you. Okay. Yeah. Why don't we, we do the whole thing? Do you have any questions?
No, I think it's anytime you can get any weight off of hips. As someone who has had two children. I think that that's a great idea. So, no.
Okay. All right. Let's move on to tattoos.
So we have an existing tattoo policy that went into effect in 2018. And then that was voted on, it was voted on in 2018 that stated that any pre-existing tattoos on employees hired prior to 2017. We could not add any tattoos that were shown. I think over the past years, a lot of, some departments have relaxed their tattoo policy. And allowing those that we hire to, to actually be able to show their tattoos, especially because I believe it's becoming more of a sociable norm. However, we have two officers right now that are covering theirs up. And if they were hired prior to this, they, they would not be in any violation of what the existing, the proposed policy would be. I've been seeing them in the 90, 95, 98 degree weather. They're adhering to the policy. They're doing what we ask them to do. I just look at them and say, you know, I, I've seen their tattoos and I know that it's, wouldn't violate any sort of violation of any sort of policy that we put in place that I proposed already tonight. So, but they are covering it and they are covering, and they're doing what we ask them to do. So I am asking for the change in the policy that would allow them to wear like short sleeve shirts in the, in the summertime. We're not having to cover it up. You know, we're not, I'm not asking for a free for all. I'm asking for a continuation of a part of the policy that allows discretion by the chief to turn around and still require somebody to cover if we needed them to cover. But the, the policy that's in place right now, I don't think is fair and I think we need to change that.
So the, so the, there's still, the only standard right now, I mean, you, you would decide, you still have the discretion if there's a tattoo that you.
Right now?
It was appropriate.
No, right now, there's, you either cover it or you don't.
You cover, you don't.
I mean, you cover it or you don't work.
Oh, you don't.
If you're hired after 2017.
2017, okay.
If you're hired before 2017, you are, we had no restrictions. We had no policy in place. So you could.
Okay.
You could, and we did have officers that had on tattoos. And this, it's not, this isn't, you know, the, the face, the neck would still be on the policy, but it's the, you know, it's really has to do with like more of the forearms. Cause you can see that my.
Right.
You know, that's, this is the only area that is really exposed when we wear uniforms. We wear uniforms, want to look, you know, one uniform. But we also wear pants because you never know what kind of environment you're going into. You want to keep protected. So you don't see us in shorts. You know, maybe on extreme days, on deep construction details you will. But as far as our uniform tops go, it's just going to be, you know, what the exposed skin on the, on the arm is going to be. And right now, like I said, the officers are wearing long sleeve shirts or are coverings.
Right, right.
So.
No more questions?
I have no.
Can I ask that question?
Yeah.
Are you comfortable having the discretion to ask an officer to cover up? That you feel comfortable that the policy would support your decision? Should there be, for example, a tattoo that was gang related or had some sexual or racial component to it?
So I'm. It wouldn't be asking. It would be an order. It would be more, you have to do this and that's how we work as a police department. So it wouldn't be a, I obviously I'd ask very nicely and say, this is, you know, and a professional role. But it would ultimately be come down, hey, listen, this is what you got to do. And this is a police department and we got to be a professional part of the community. And, you know, those aren't the standards that you're showing, so.
Kind of building on what Mr. Burns just asked, Chief. I like what you're doing and I agree with it. I think as a recruitment tool, especially to the extent that you may recruit from ex-military, it's kind of inevitable. It's a good idea. I have one. You're moving to a model though where the supervisor, the chief exercises discretion, though with criteria that you have laid out here. But that raises for me a question and then a comment. The question is, I would feel more comfortable if we had town council or someone review this and pass off on it. Things like this raise, among other things, First Amendment concerns. Especially when you're mentioning like banning religious stuff. I probably don't know if you can even do it. I just want a lawyer to take a look at it and say, this is okay. My comment is in those criteria. I think they're pretty good. I think you're missing one. I want to suggest things that are excessively violent. You know, particularly again, coming from the ex-military, you'll see some things that you just might find to be inappropriate or inherently kind of threatening in a certain situation. And I would want you to have the grounds to do something about it.
Okay. I would always say that I have the grounds to, to make a, you know, an order. And then as far as the censoring, you know, I appreciate the, you know, always being reviewed, you know, that's why I'm here and I always appreciate that. So, you know, have town council look at it. Okay. Cause we always want to do things right. So absolutely. And I know that the First Amendment is, your First Amendment rights and your employer's rights, you know, you kind of have a little bit more as, as an employer to employee, you can have a little more constriction on somebody. There's a lot of policies in place on, especially in a police department. How we look at our officers, especially in their off-duty conduct and especially on the fact that we can regulate their social media posts when they're off-duty from a private computer from, and their private home and make, and their private posts can come back because it's a general representation of the police department. So, but absolutely, let's, you know, if KMI needs to do that and then I'm, I'm always about getting reviewed. So it's, you know, if that makes the board feel more comfortable, then that's.
Well, that would be, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it. I suspect you're right that First Amendment rights are a little bit mitigated for law enforcement, but I don't know. But I would prefer that somebody who knows, take a look at it. So that's it. I, I think it's a great idea.
It does seem, I mean, the part that's staying put is already existing policy. It seems like it would have already been reviewed by.
You never know. I, I, I learned a long time ago.
Okay.
Never assume.
Also, to be perfectly honest, standards change in the law. So it, it would not be a bad idea.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Oh, I don't have any other questions. I mean, it seems totally reasonable to me. So, so discussion, I guess. No more questions with the chief or pardon me?
Is the peanut gallery allowed to ask a question?
At this point, let, let us have our discussion and then.
Sure. First, first I want to commend you, Chief, on a fantastic presentation to us. Both your written presentation, which allowed me to actually do my research, investigate things, you know, try to find holes in what your policy changes, which I think is always a good thing, right? And so thank you for doing that. And your, you know, in-person presentation was great, allowing us to actually see that, that medical benefit, especially that, as you highlighted in your, in your written text. And, you know, I'd like to commend you on considering the look of these vests as it comes to community policing. Because that generally is the main concern that I was finding, both from police side publications, from academics. I was trying to find like, what, what's the conversation on these? And I think you hit it spot on, right? That we want our vests to really represent the core culture of our community and that is, you know, truly being about service and, and community policing and working with our town. So to me, I think that this, this vest policy just makes sense. It's the right, right thing for health and all of that. But also I think it matches your, like what I can see is your vision of how you want this police department to look and feel. And, and I commend you for that and it's, it's really impressive. And on the tattoo I had, and I think it's the lawyer maybe in us, Mr. Salvi, that the First Amendment concern came up. Obviously this would be government conduct. This is also a police department. So I think in terms of First Amendment, you know, I think having that sign-off would ensure that the town is properly giving you the guidelines. So to me, it protects you and your decisions more than anything else. And so I'm not also against having that as being sort of a check. But it, because really to me, it is about protecting you when you say, this is my order and then you're backed by a policy. We know that town council's looked at and we know that. We can stand fully behind your decision, which I think is the right decision. Cause I think again, it's about ensuring that your officers are really trying to be available to all members and knowing that certain, you know, tattoos may actually be offensive to, to others and trying to find that balance. And so I think this is absolutely fantastic two policies. I'm behind both of them. With the exception that I do agree with Mr. Salvi with regards to having that attorney make sure that it's just correct. So that way you know when you say, no, our bylaws, you know, our policy says this, you know that you have that sign-off by, by council.
Thank you.
If nothing, yeah.
So would our attorneys present be comfortable passing it with, you know, presuming, I mean, with the stipulation that it would be approved by council?
Conditioned.
Conditioned, thanks for the word.
Sure. You know, Denise will do that and then just tell us at a later meeting that town council passed out. And I'm going to leave my excessively violent suggestion as a suggestion. Picking up on something Mr. Burns said though, I think you want that in there just to protect yourself.
Yep.
So.
It's always an option.
Right.
It's easier to have it in than it's not.
Exactly. But I'll, I'll leave it up to you. So.
Yeah. Well, and I, I also, I mean, to add to what Zach was, in terms of, you know, thinking through this, I think it also, you, you mentioned that there's been, you know, we're getting younger officers who are going to have tattoos and they don't even apply because they know it's not accepted in the policy. So I think that that's also really important as we're trying to get a.
Yeah. I've had people in my office that have said, I'm, I'm thinking about it, but I got these and we'll have to cover and like, yeah, right now you will.
Yeah. Okay. So with that, I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I will move to approve the proposed, the amendments proposed by Chief Solisi to policy 4.36, uniforms, clothing and individual equipment. And I will move to approve. Those are all in the same section.
Oh, yeah.
The change in the policy regarding tattoos being conditioned on a review by town council.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I am unanimous. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And now you're going to give us an update on police accreditation? Oh, I'm sorry. You, you had a comment. You did have a comment.
No, it was just a, it was just a quick question and comment. I mean, the tattoo thing, that's, that's a no-brainer it seems and I agree that you guys voted on it. My, my question was about the vests and whether it was, was it a requisite change or was it an optional change? Did you have to change to this new vest or could you choose between? So they, they asked that. The officers have the option to change if they would like to. Oh, okay. And it's going to come, as I stated, it's going to come out of their existing clothing allowance. So the vest, we, the vest you can't, you know, is, the vest is the best.
Sure.
And so that, but it's on how they carry it. So it's on them on what they want, what they want to use their clothing allowance for. If they want to spend that money on that exterior carrier.
Thank you.
Typically it ends up being like an age thing, almost like all the younger officers are wearing the second with the gear in the, in the front. The older officers, myself, Sergeant Gogan typically are old school, still wear duty belt, still are very comfortable with that. Would be a big change for myself and Dave and others to go from what we're used to for 25, 30 years to this.
Right.
So that is a benefit of the option as well to, to force officers to go to something that they're uncomfortable with. It's kind of a lot to ask. And like I said, all the new guys that are coming on board, they're already this. You know, so they, they would be uncomfortable if we had to wear a duty belt because they're used to that.
Yeah. You got to know where you're reaching for and.
Hundred percent, right. Cause you know, after years, you can do it with your eyes closed. So, and that's what you want.
Right, right. Great. So accreditation up.
Accreditation. And I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant Train because, so Lieutenant Train is going to be the accreditation manager. So he has been going to the trainings and has been looking into our policies and our, each step that we're going along with here. Currently we are in a self-assessment part of the accreditation, which is the first step where we do a self-look at what we, what we have existing. And, and then what's going to happen, you know, let him explain further, is that we're going to get a review. They're going to come in and they're going to let us know where we're deficient or pretty much where we're deficient, not really where we're excelling at right now. Cause it's about correcting and, and we are, from what we have seen so far, we're in a pretty good spot already because of the existing policies that we already have in place. We meet a lot of the standards.
I think you're done. Seriously? That's pretty much it? As you, I guess, no, we are in the process of becoming state accredited. If we go back a little bit, the department was accredited state, actually it was nationally accredited in 1988, we became accredited. In 1992 or 93, we didn't recertify. So then we were no longer accredited. Now it's, it's a big deal again within the state. There, I don't know the exact numbers, but there's many, many, many that are either accredited or certified. So that's the history of the Stowe Police Department. We were and we're seeking re-accreditation, but we do have to start over. They are in the, pretty soon it's going to be the sixth edition of accreditation. With new police policy and police reform, there's a lot of new added stuff. So like the chief explained, it's basically four steps, application and acceptance. That was the first step. We, we passed on that. We are in self-assessment right now, which the chief explained also. We're taking a look at a lot of our policy. We look at our facilities, make sure we're in line with everything. Again, like you said, looking through everything. So to become certified, which is the first step, there is 159 standards, basically policies to become certified. And just looking through the list of them without like digging right into everything, if I read things that say like oath of office we have, warning shots we have, I mean, just write down the list, everything I, I know that we have. So again, I don't think we're going to have much of a process, I mean, problem with the process. It, it is kind of lengthy and I'm not quite sure why. It's a one to two-year process. I am going to try to expedite it as, as quickly as possible. Again, because like I've already said, we're there, I think, on just about everything. The next step is a mock facility tour where they come out and look at the station. Holding facilities, cruisers, dispatch, phone, radio, all that stuff, facility stuff. That might be where we might have a problem with an older building, handicap accessible. We don't have a button on the door. I don't know if that's a requirement when they come out. The station, as you guys know, is all on the first floor. So we don't have stairs and elevators and that's not even going to be a problem. So I guess where I, we would be looking for support somewhere down the line might be monetarily if we have to step up something to do this. Once we get done with this certification, we can stop there. A lot of departments do. Or we could seek full-on accreditation, which accreditation is about another hundred standards. It's 257 to become fully accredited. And if we do become, even if we are certified or become accredited, it's a three-year contract. Once you're accredited, it's three years and then you recertify after three years.
And if we do need policy changes, I would recommend that we bring them to the board slowly incrementally. Because if we turn around and drop 1,500 pages on your desk and say, hey, okay, we changed page 432. You know, I think it's unfair for the board and unfair for us. And especially if we do a lot of policy changes at once, it's unfair for the public and our officers to make that big of a change. All of a sudden, if we do it slowly, they can, you know, the public has an expectation from us. We post our policies online and then the officers know exactly what's required of them. So that's an advantage of that. And like the lieutenant was saying, we, we're going to be getting that review. I don't know when that's going to happen. Honestly, they're, we're waiting for the bill and then we have to pay and then to get, to start this. So once that happens and we do get a report, we can turn that report over to the board and say, this is what they came back and said. This is what they said about us as a Stowe Police Department. We have, thanks to the board and the existing changes that I initially made prior to becoming chief. Some of those policies actually put us in a really good place because we were able to submit that to the federal government. And then what do they call that though? We were able to still be eligible for grants because we got rid of, you know, our duty.
We came up to date with like warning shots and pursuit policy and all the stuff that's in the new police reform.
Yeah, duty to intervene. Because we did all that so early on, we were able to ensure that we still get grants from the, from the government and we're still able to, and we get certified that way. Cause it was like five criteria and we were able just to send them our existing policies right away. So we are going in the right direction. We'd be looking, as Lieutenant said, once we know our deficiencies, we come to the board and say, okay, hey, we need, this is what, where we're lacking. How can you get, this is the help we're looking for. Help us get, get to that point. And that's, I'd be, you know, obviously relying on the board and Denise for, for that.
Yeah.
Contrary to what the chief said, I don't think we're going to have 1,400 pages of policy change. And that's why I, I think it's a better idea to just go policy by policy. Because again, just looking over some stuff, glossing over, I don't see much we're going to have to change. Maybe update, but not change.
Sure.
Or add.
I think it's funny, you, you mentioned, you called it an old police station? It hasn't been that long, has it?
Twenty, twenty-five years. Still has, still has the original paint on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's a difference.
That's changing. However, but.
We let Frank go away too soon, right? Cause maybe, you know, but.
And I, I love our station. I don't see any need. But if you go into some of the newer police stations, there's a lot of new high-tech changes. I mean, we still have keys and push buttons where they have card swipes and all of that kind of stuff. So I don't know if those kind of things are going to be a problem.
You know, I'd be looking and I talked to Denise about like upgrading our camera system, upgrading our, you know, our, if we have a conference room, getting cameras, voice recording. Right now we're still using a digital memo recorder. So like, let's, let's.
Well, now we got the, I won't, so.
I know, I was just, I was just looking right to the right too. Cause the library's only right down the street.
So we're going to be looking at, you know, these types of changes and this is where we would have to come to the board.
Yeah. So that kind, yeah. Right. Go ahead, Jim.
On, along those lines, keep in mind our operational and capital budget season really kicks off in like December. So what are the chances that the facilities portion might be done by that? Is there any chance?
What month are you looking at roughly?
December this year.
I'm hoping, so there, I'm hoping October.
Okay.
Okay.
It's four. It's really, as soon as I can get through this checklist certification form that I have to get through that shows that we have met some of the criteria, then we can have the onsite assessment.
Okay. Just keep in mind the capital budget season, December is maybe a little bit early.
I'm really hoping way before that. Yeah.
And I, I remember from last year when I did, going through my first capital planning meeting, which was, I think we got zoomed on, zoom bombed on, but anyway.
Oh, yeah. That was famous.
And you know how much the committee hates last minute.
I, I understand that and I will, I will make sure to have, to try to have everything ready to go.
Absolutely.
And I, I know that the lieutenant said, you know, there's these standards, the 159 and then the approximately 257. There are this, that many, but there is a handful of things that we just don't do in Stowe. We don't have SWAT team members. We don't have K9s. We don't have things, things that we just don't have. We can get waivers for. So we don't have to do all 257.
Yeah, we've already been waived, well, the process of getting waived, about 10 of the standards right now that we, like the chief, we just don't have.
Yeah. Yeah.
I just wanted to ask, and this is maybe obvious, but I, for other people that may not have this. What, we haven't been accredited since 1993.
It was actually, yeah, it was 88 and then you got five years on federal.
Okay.
And then it went to, and then 93 they re-upped and then 98.
Okay.
They didn't, they chose not to pay, pay up. And then that's why we lost it.
Got it. At 10,000 feet, what is the, what are the benefits for us, for you, for us going through this process?
That we follow all the standards that are set forth by the state.
Okay. Does it allow, so it would allow us access to funding? Yes or no?
I, I think it would access a little bit more funding, but it also shows more transparency.
Okay.
It shows more accountability.
Yeah.
For, as a department, the, the set standards are, hey, this is what we expect our, from our police officers, the community can hold us more accountable. And a lot of our stuff is already, a lot of what they're asking for is already there.
Right.
But it's, it just sets that higher level standard of professionalism. You have institutions that are accredited. You have.
Right.
Hospitals that are accredited. So this, this just puts us out in, in that more professional standard.
I mean, I'm a hundred percent behind it. I just want to make sure that like, anytime there's a cost with anything, I just want to make sure that it's like.
And we would, and obviously being transparent, you know, this is the budget of the town.
Yeah.
Saying this is exactly, this is what we're looking for. This is what we're going for. This is what the needs are and this is what the money is going to us. We've always done that.
I mean, it's a small number. It's 1,800. I mean, it's a small number, it's eighteen-hundred.
Oh, yeah, it's eighteen.
Oh, for the bill?
For three years.
For three years.
It's a small number.
Oh, that's the regulation fee?
That's the fee.
That's the fee.
It's, it's the building changes that.
Yeah.
Might.
And hopefully there's not too many, because, I mean, they have pa- past older buildings, there might just need to be some smaller modifications.
Well, and the thing you mentioned.
Ours isn't old by many standard, police departments.
Right, we know a lot of those towns here.
But we just, we've seen other like communication centers that are locked up, like you have to key in, key out. It's not something that we need to do, we don't have those locks on our communication center, you know, so if.
We actually do, yeah, the door locks.
It's not a key in, oh, it's a key in, it's not a, it's not a bi- a, a, a push button to get in. So is that something we'd have to do? What, you know, and those are examples, cause we don't know and that's what we're waiting for, to come, for people to come in and say, hey, this is what we're looking at, this is what we see, this is what we don't see, we should see this. You need to get that up to, up to par.
Well, just the cameras, I mean, I, I think that's, I mean, we've learned, you know, that it's not a huge investment and it's so much better. And it's, especially for the work you guys do, it seems like that would be a critical thing, yeah.
I just, I love everything that's been said, I think this is wonderful, um, but I wanna take it one step further, which is, you know, in this evaluation, I hope we're also doing what you've been doing, chief, which is also looking to see what's right and how we can do it better. You know, accreditation is, is to me a floor and then there is the, you know, we noticed that there is no handicap accessibility button in front of the police department. Let's, let's try to run that down, let's see how much that costs, let's, let's get the optionality on the table, cause that's the right thing to do for folks that need to use that, you know, button. And I think getting that also back, you know, to us is, is also important, you know, obviously through Denise on, on some of these operational issues, but, um, I think that's the right thing to do. So as part of this process, I hope we're, you know, y'all are also doing that, I know you are, but just, I, you know, I think it's really important that we're assessing, you know, that building from that view as well, right? Of ensuring that we have accessibility, ensuring that we are meeting the standards that you think we should also be meeting. And it may be that accreditation says you're fine, but, you know, maybe that chief, you, you and, and lieutenant say, this just doesn't feel right, it feels like we do need to make a move here and it feels like there is something. And then, you know, working with Denise to see what that budget looks like and, and, you know, really thinking about that too. For me, that's, that's really important that we're undertaking this process, sort of in the spirit of the accreditation, not necessarily always in their, their black and white.
Yeah, no, and I can tell you that, um, anytime we do anything, we always have discussions over and y- you never end up just talking about that one specific thing. Um, even in, even here tonight, like, you know, other, other things have come up. And it's not just, uh, the lieutenant and I saying, okay, this is the way it's gonna be, we've talked to the members of the department and saying, you know, we're going through this and, and you'll hear officers. And why, and it may not be like, okay, we're sitting in a circle, this is exactly what we're talking about, but you can hear, hey, I really wish we had this, or why don't we do this? Or why is it done this way, not this way, I saw this other town do this, and you're like, hey, that's a better, that's a better way. So, you know, we're always self-evaluating, we're always self-adjusting, um, and always looking to, to make sure that we do things, uh, one, not only right, but also better and how we can always improve. And again, like, you know, as I stated earlier to Jim, you know, I always look for review and, you know, feedback, it's, you know, the checks and balances are important and, uh, so it's always good to have outside people come in.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, accreditation, that's, it's really there to, to s- set the floor, as I said, it's not necessarily the limit, so.
Exactly, it's not a limit, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a bottom bar, so you can just continue on after that.
Yeah, that's great. Any other comments, Denise, did you have that?
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna mention, um, to Jim's point on capital, I think, you know, certainly, uh, the chief and I have talked about the cameras, interrogation cameras, things like that, that we should work on regardless. So if the building assessment doesn't come through in time for capital, we should look at, you know, um, the ADA accessible doors, we just went through to put them for this building. I don't know why we didn't include all buildings in that, but, um, those are some things we can think about. Uh, but we should include the police station, upgrading the cameras, putting a, um, mounted interrogation camera, you know, it would be similar to a room like this with the speakers built in, microphones built in, and then you have a mounted camera for protection for the officers, um, and those in the room. I mean, as Mike said, he's bringing a, you know, digital recorder when he's recording these things. And first of all, that's not safe, someone outside the room can't monitor it, can't make sure that everything is, is going okay. There are little things that can be done to improve the safety regardless of going through the accreditation process. So I think we should look at those items that come up during this process and start to build a capital plan around the improvements that need to be made either way.
It's been twenty-five years since I was on the committee that built the building, so now I'm feeling quite old.
Yeah, I know, I still think of it as the new police station, oh, well, yeah. Um, any other questions about the accreditation process? Thank you so much for that update, that really, was really helpful and we knew that there was a stack of, that's about as far as I had gotten on, you know, policies, so that's great.
We're working through them solely, but thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Okay, um, Board of Health, um, do we have the Board of Health members here?
Yes, they are all on.
Awesome, thank you all for joining us. So I, we had asked, um, members of the Board of Health to join us tonight, I mean, in part because, you know, there was this recent sort of, um, uh, issue with one of the haulers, but I thought it was just an opportunity, we had, the board had been talking, as I think I mentioned to Mary, um, we've been talking about wanting to get all the boards coming in at some point during the year to talk with the select board, sort of full board to full board. So this, you're just first up. So, um, I think I'd like to just start and just ask you all, just to talk about, you know, what you've been working on, um, sort of, I guess, if, if you think of it as a work plan for the year, sort of what, what your sort of agenda is. And, um, and then we can get in some of the specifics that came up around, um, uh, waste management and, and private haulers. Does that make sense to Mary or, I can't see the name, so I don't know who's there, but I see Mary.
Yeah, it's Mary, yeah, then I see that Mary and Marcia are in here too.
Right.
Um, first of all, hi, everybody.
Hi, hi.
It's nice to be in the meeting and it's actually really interesting, so it's been actually pretty fun. The one, um, comment, Ellen, that I have is that in coming to the meeting tonight, I thought the conversation was just around the haulers and the rubbish and that kinda conversation, I didn't know it was a presentation on our plans for the year.
Well, I, I mean, my email was just that if you wanted to bring up other things, but no, I don't mean a formal presentation, I just thought if, I didn't wanna limit, if there was other things you all wanted to bring to us, that would be fine. But yes, we can start with the haulers and go from there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think, I think if we stick to the haulers tonight, um, I don't know if the other board members have other things to bring up that we just haven't discussed. But I would ask if we could come back.
Okay.
Um, and then we could, we do a mini presentation or something, just to kinda, you know, talk with all of you about our plans and, you know, what we see coming up other than like, the normal stuff, like the flu clinic that we do and whatnot.
Right.
Um, so, yeah, I'd, I'd love to come to another meeting, um, just to kind of go over that stuff with all of you.
Sure, so, um, so the, the questions that I've been hearing and the sort of the, the impetus for having you here was not just about, you know, what, who, whose rules uh, or who, uh, controls the, the private hauler relationships, but also there was some discussion around transfer stations and, um, I think Jim had brought up, there had been a past discussion some years ago about connecting with, you know, actually formally coordinating with another town that had a transfer station, but then other people were saying, Stowe residents actually can use certain transfer stations. So I thought you all could basically, you know, take this opportunity since other, you know, this is recorded for the whole town, like, tell us what, what your perspective is on, on where we are with, uh, with this whole issue.
All right, so right now, as of today, everybody knows that in Stowe, if you live here, you have to contract out for private rubbish and recycling. There is no townwide, yeah, um, this probably affects the new folks that are moving into town more than anybody else, cause it's always a little bit of a surprise. So, I mean, that's just the bottom line, that's, that's how Stowe runs right now. I think in the past, early on when I was on the board, maybe like nine years ago, there was, I asked the question about townwide service and it was mentioned that it was brought up previously like years ago, um, and it just, it kinda didn't really go anywhere. I think if this is something that if we even remotely wanna think about pursuing, it would be, you know, definitely a group project between many departments, because it's not just the Board of Health that would be involved, we're talking, you know, public works folks, probably the select board, you know, there's a lot of people that would have to be involved. And also, obviously, it would have to go to town meeting and then the discussion of how much it would cost and blah, 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 all that, all those details. In regards to the transfer station, um, yes, I have heard that some towns will let Stowe people use theirs and then I have also heard that no other towns will not let us use theirs. And I think the final hearsay, if you will, is that we can't use other towns' facilities, because they're for their town and their population. And if they open it up to Stowe, it would cost a lot of money and, um, it would just be a lot more people putting their stuff there. With that being said, it hasn't really been officially looked into. So again, it would just take a little bit more research and diving into it to see if, you know, Hudson, Marlboro, Boxer, whomever, would be willing to expand their service and let Stowe residents, um, use their transfer station, obviously for a cost. So that's where we are with that. So to be quite honest and upfront, I mean, if, if this is something that, you know, you know, Denise, the Board of Health, the Select Board, even remotely wanna pursue, I think, like I said earlier, I think it would be a little bit of a group project just to start the research off. To see, to see even, what's the phrase, like to put our toes in the water, just to see if it's even an option for this town, because, um, as, you know, many of us know who live here, people like to complain a lot, but they don't like to pay for stuff or volunteer. So, you know, it, it sounds great to us and, you know, we could do all this work, but then, you know, people could turn around and feel like, I am not paying fifty dollars extra in my taxes every year to have someone pick up my trash. So, uh, you know, that's just the reality of living in Stowe, so.
So that would, that would be cheaper than what we're paying.
So any questions or other comments, I mean, this is just an open conversation about this, because
Yeah.
there's really nothing at this very second that's happening with it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if it was only fifty dollars, that would be way cheaper than what we're paying now.
Okay, right, I know.
I don't think that's true. Um, I, I guess I'm, I'm surprised that you didn't know about what the status was with, um, transfer stations, cause I've heard from multiple people that Acton, you, I mean, it's not free, you'd have to pay to do it, but that we have access to it, but, um, if you don't, and nobody on the board knows about that on, on the Board of Health?
I'll open it up to Mary Lee or Marcia, but, I mean, I do not know officially in writing that they will let Stowe residents go. And I wouldn't, if, without it in writing, I wouldn't say it.
Yeah.
During the meeting, because I don't want people to come back and say, the Board of Health said we could do that.
No, that's right, absolutely, I agree.
So, I mean, it would have to be in writing and that would just take, you know, soliciting the folks over at Acton or, and authors surrounding towns with transfer stations to, you know, give us their policies and let us know if they would even be open to a discussion.
Right, right. Other questions? Wait, I'm gonna have the board talk first. Um, I guess just, I'll just add the specific question on waste management, I'm, I think you all had been in touch with them, right, or is, or is Denise handling it?
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Oh, yeah, um, assuming, I mean, Kayleen, um, one of our health agents, was in contact with them, I would say daily, um, at the height of their non-picking up. And had provided the information to the board and to, um, Cindy in the office and to Denise and all the information was put up on the website. So, yes, we were definitely aware of it, but because we, we permit them, all the haulers obviously, to come into town to pick up trash, but the contracts again are between the residents and the contractor and the haulers. So it's not like we could say, well, waste management, you have to do that, because we have no jurisdiction over them other than that permit to allow them to haul, which is a little bit of a jurisdiction, but we can't cancel people's contracts, you know, just because they did, uh.
Right, and, but I guess you're understanding, I mean, I'm not a waste management customer, so I don't know, are we, is that resolved now, are they now back on schedule? Have you heard any more?
I believe, I mean, I'm not a waste manager, um, person either, I believe they are back on schedule, um, at least for the time being, because I have neighbors that are and I know their trash has been being picked up. I, I think, and I think, I'm just trying to remember correctly, their ration, not rationale, yeah, their rationale as to the issue of not picking up was, um, a staffing problem. Which, fair, I mean, it's, sure. And I think, you know, as we can see all over, it's kind of a aftermath of COVID that a lot of places are just understaffed. We're hoping that doesn't happen to the other haulers, um, I haven't heard or seen anything to say that it is. Um, and like I said, just anecdotally, my neighbor's trash has been picked up and hasn't, hasn't been any other issues that I'm aware of.
And have you all had any discussion around?
People will call the Board of Health and complain if their trash is not being picked up, so, but right now, I think it's okay.
And this is narrowly, I was just gonna add too, that I had a lot of, I don't have waste management, but I had a lot of neighbors that do. And it, it was really a problem for about two weeks and now it seems to have resolved. My feeling is that this would be something, if it starts to correct regularly, when we're looking at issuing next year's permits, we'd certainly wanna look at. But my understanding is that it's a little tight getting service in Stowe as it is. I've tried to switch haulers and couldn't because they weren't taking new people. So if we do see that we need to take some kind of action, we're probably gonna have to look at, uh, recruiting additional haulers also.
Thanks, Mary Lee, that was gonna be, my question was sort of, at what point do we look at the impact on licenses for next year, so? Cause I, I mean, I just anecdotally heard from, from residents who've had waste management that they've been a problem for a long time. So I don't, I mean, but I don't know, you know, it's hard to, what does that mean, you know, quantify it, no. So this was the only time it's been obvious, you know, it was townwide and it looked like it was other towns too, from what I saw driving around, so.
Oh, interesting, I didn't know.
Oh, yeah, so it was, it was almost every, I mean, Acton, I saw houses with the same overflowing dumpsters and it was, yeah. And then, I can't remember, I remember this Hudson, maybe, I can't remember other towns, so. Questions, other board members? Or comments, I guess?
No, I, I don't wanna get into specifics about it, because it may be the subject of an adjudication that the Board of Health does in about a year. And I don't think it would be a very good idea for the Board of Selectmen to be commenting, for the Select Board to be commenting on it substantively at this point. So I'm focusing on the process and narrowly clarified for me, basically, that interfering with an existing permit is extremely unusual and is not really on the table now, I can understand that, but that there is the potential for this subject to come up in the reissuance of a permit next year, if it continues or happens again, is that about right, Mary Lee?
I, I think so, I defer to the rest of the board, but that was my other.
Yeah, that's the understanding, that's what the board talked about.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I, I'm gonna ask, Katie had a, a comment, so could you identify yourself for people who don't?
I, we run into trash problems all the time with work.
Yeah.
People have a lot of excess and most of the communities around us will allow you to bring, um, trash to the, to their, uh, transfer stations. But you need to call ahead and they cost a lot more than it does to have a hauler. So it does come up a lot, I know Hudson takes stuff, uh, we've used Marlboro, Acton I, I have, but with clients that live in Acton.
Good, thank you.
But call ahead.
Right.
And check their websites.
Well, that's, thank you for that clarification, I think, um, what I'd love to hear about, you know, next time we meet was just sort of, I mean, as I said, the sort of what your work plan is. I'm particularly, you know, with the MRC, we didn't hear much, um, and that's not your fault, uh, from you all this past year. Um, and I know that you were all really busy, there was a few things going on in the health world. But, you know, just sort of, you know, I know that you do the flu clinic and I don't, I actually don't know if the MRC's sort of active anymore, if that's part of that, but, um, just hearing more what, you know, things besides the, I mean, the, this isn't routine. The garbage doesn't usually come up from what I've seen in Board of Health issues, it's usually around Title Fives and those kinda things. But, um, so we'd just love to, to hear more about what you all are, are thinking, so.
Sure, but no problem, Ellen, that's total, we can definitely do that, when, um, when would, does it come back?
Well, that, we're, actually, it's on our agenda tonight to talk about our schedule for, for various boards coming to meet with us, so, uh, we will get back to you. So it won't be next week, I promise.
Okay, that's fine. I did just have one follow-up question, I mean, in regards to all of this talk about, you know, possibly townwide pickup and whatnot, I mean, is that something that we wanna talk about later in pursuing and researching? Or are you, are you all gonna talk about it amongst yourselves?
I know that Denise is not hot on the idea. I know that Denise is not hot on the idea.
It, it's expensive. I mean, it, it's expensive. I think Maynard, when they, they went, it was about six hundred grand.
Wow.
You know, it's a lot of money for a teeny tiny little town, so.
Right.
Um, but, I mean, there, there, who knows, there could be some other alternatives that we all haven't thought about yet, you know?
Right.
Well, and trash, you know, trash is a commodity, and with the recycling as it is, municipalities are paying more and more money as the cost of recycling is increasing that was not budgeted for, was not planned for. And, uh, a lot of towns got themselves in situations because they can't cover the cost. So, I think, quite frankly, the, the position we're in now, yes, it's a little blip with waste management in a couple of weeks, and hopefully they have recovered. I know I spoke to Cindy and she said the call volume has dramatically decreased in the office around trash. Um, I think it's a good situation that we have, potentially if there is another one or two haulers that we could, um, in teister come to the area, might be worthwhile. Uh, but I think the conversation of increasing taxes to pay for trash is going to be one that folks are not gonna welcome.
Well, especially if it entails more FTEs.
Right.
Which, if we, I, I know you're considering creating something that in name is a Department of Public Works, but it's different when you're talking about a Department of Public Works that gets into not only roads, but trash, potentially water, at least on a small scale. Then you're talking about enterprise funds and user fees that don't come anywhere close to covering the operating costs or the bonds, um, it's huge.
Yeah. So I'd say that's a no, Mary.
That loud and clear. That is perfectly fine.
I think, the only thing, I was intrigued, um, Jim had mentioned it like a decade ago, there was some talk about, um, getting some access to Boxer's transfer station, because they had capacity. Now, that probably has changed as well, but, I mean, I think that would be the only thing I'd say, you know, is it worth considering? You know, for people who needed that occasional, because, I mean, I think the only issue with private haulers is when you have something big to throw away, they charge you up the yin yang for it. And, you know, if there was a transfer station that would be, you know, either a swap shop or, or something where, you know, we might be able to, to work something out. But, but that's been my only thought in terms of changing what we have now.
Well, and I'll say, I have town trash and it's waste management, and you still pay to throw things away that don't fit in the trash bin.
Right, yeah.
So, you know, couches and things like that, you still pay a fee on top of that. So whether it's private trash or public trash, it's, they still charge you.
Yeah, and I think just because it is, there is a lot of hearsay about what we can and can't do with the local, the other town transfer stations is, um, you know, the Board of Health Office, we can definitely put together, you know, couple hours' worth of research to say, okay, yes, you can go to this one and this is what it's gonna cost you. And just put something out there, we can, you know, show it to Denise and, you know, make sure it's website appropriate and, you know, just so, just so people know, because people do ask about it, you know, where, where are you gonna throw that sofa? You know, it's like, people do have stuff that has to be hauled away. So, we can, the Board of Health can definitely take that on. And when I say the Board of Health, I mean me, so. Definitely do that.
That would be great. I mean, I think that would be, uh, really helpful just to, especially to sort of minimize all the chatter, as you said, you know.
Exactly, exactly, yeah. We'll help you, Mary, you don't have to do it alone. Thanks.
Great. Yep.
All right.
No, one more.
Any other questions?
Yep, one more for me.
Yeah, just, just one more. I just wanted to say, that's the exact type of solution that I think is really appropriate when we get into these situations, is how we can increase the amount of information that comes from a central location that has been duly researched, is appropriate, is not, you know, buying on hearsay, but is really, you know, doing that hard work of calling and figuring it out. So if we have this again, I would love to, you know, focus on that and making sure that we're thinking about how we can ensure right information is out as fast as possible. Uh, and if there's, you know, as you're going through this, if maybe there's a way for the board to think about a policy on this also, like how we can quickly respond to these incidents where we know we need fast information coming out, uh, as we sort of take the gleanings from this waste management situation, I think that could be very helpful.
I see that, thank you.
All right, thank you, um.
Oh, Mary, you just mentioned about flu clinic, we've set that date also.
Yes, please.
Yeah, it's gonna be, um, Saturday, the sixteenth of October, from ten to twelve, Mary?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Ten to twelve, and, um, more details will follow. Um, it will be inside this year, um, and we will be, um, having people set up appointments, um, just so we know how much vaccine we need, um, and how many folks are planning on coming.
Terrific. That's great. A little bit of normalcy. Awesome.
A little bit.
A little bit, yeah.
Thank you all, thanks, all three of you for joining us tonight, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, of course, and just let us know when you want us back. And, um, Denise, I'll get to work on that and, uh, probably in the next couple of weeks, get it to you. I don't wanna say I'll get it to you tomorrow.
No, that's great. And if you need some help with that, let me know, Mary, I can assign some, um, staff to help.
Right, thanks so much. Have a good night, everybody.
You too, Mary.
All right, bye.
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 Okay, um, so we've got year-end transfers for fiscal twenty-one.
Uh, yes, so I left them all for you.
Yep.
Um, there's not a ton of transfers that need to be made, but just year-end stuff. Um, in the past, uh, the town took the position of letting this all roll against free cash and come off the free cash balance. To me, that's not clean. Uh, it's clean to close the books with zero deficits and not affect free cash. Um, so it's just a number of, I think there's ten, um, mainly minor transfers. Um, I put some information on each one, so I'll just go down the list quickly. Um, to make it even neater and cleaner, we're just debiting one account, police officer wages, uh, with, uh, Mike filling in as interim chief. His patrol detective position was vacant, so there was funding in the budget, as well as we had a resignation early on in the year that we just filled the two officers. So there's plenty of money in that one line item. So instead of me taking it from each individual budget, which every budget we're transferring to has the funds to cover it, it's just much easier to debit one account and transfer it out. Um, so the first one, the town administrator salary line, um, that overage is because, uh, we had vacation buyback for Bill when he left that was not budgeted for originally. Um, other expense line, I bought, um, desk and some equipment for the new assistant TA. And if you've had a chance to walk by the meeting room, you'll see the frame is up for the new office space, so that's exciting. Uh, payroll and banking services for the treasurer's office. I wrote underbudgeted, but quite candidly, that all depends on how many checks are cut through the payroll service, how many online payments come in in a fiscal year. Obviously, that has increased because of COVID, everything was done online. So those fees were higher than expected. Uh, clerical wages, same thing, we had a retirement June thirtieth, so there was some vacation buyout that caused that to go over by fifteen hundred. Uh, the largest one is the repairs and maintenance for the building, forty thousand dollars. Uh, we received, uh, a green energies grant to do actually two projects, the lighting in this building and HVAC in the highway department. When we put the highway HVAC out to bid, it will take up the entire green energies grant and then some. Um, so I spoke with facilities, I spoke with the accountant. Uh, we felt that the price is not going to go down anytime soon, we would focus on getting that one project taken care of. So this forty thousand will cover the remainder of that contract and get that entire project taken care of. Uh, we did also speak to the state green energies and they approved not doing this and just focusing it all on the HVAC, which was, uh, much more needed. Um, police chief wages, uh, so the excess there was the stipend that Mike was receiving was higher than what we were paying the previous chief, so that caused that to go over slightly. Call firefighter EMT wages, um, that was over slightly, obviously, it's a call department, they respond. And, uh, with COVID, there was an increased number of calls. Um, also, I will say mutual aid calls are on the rise on both sides. Um, other communities have been responding here more frequently and we have been responding outside of town. So, um, I would say, you know, twenty-two hundred dollars is not a lot for excess on a call department, but, um, we did go over. Um, building department, they just did not budget for a longevity payment of three hundred dollars. Snow and ice, we did fairly well, thirty thousand over what was budgeted for for snow and ice, so, um, this will cover that deficit. Uh, the debt principal, eighty-four dollars was just a rounding issue. And the telephone, um, they were increased expenses, the cost of some of the lines went up. Uh, that was just figured out today when the bills were put through, so that should cover, this should cover all of the, um, overspent line items and clean that up. Uh, the finance committee met at seven o'clock today, and Erica texted me that they have approved these, um, as well. So I would ask that you support these transfers and then we can move forward with getting the books closed.
Questions?
I was confused by one thing you said. Uh, I thought you said that each of the accounts to which the money is going has the money to pay for it.
So for instance, the town administrator, there's money in my total budget.
But not this line item.
Not that line item. And, and so it would still require a transfer, because it's going from one town meeting-appropriate line item to another. And in order, you know, that would have been ten additional transfers that accounting would have had to make, um, to debit.
I understand.
So they all had funding to cover these deficits when you looked at the bottom line of the department, with the exception of snow and ice. Um, so this was just a cleaner, easier way to do it.
And the column under snow and ice over to the right is, the initial figure is what it started off with, and that, the expenditures?
Uh, so no, it started off a little bit higher. Um, some expenditures were charged directly to that line item. Um, and then there are different lines, so one of them is materials, one of them is wages, one of it is overtime. It's just broken down, it's just so I could add up the different accounts and make sure we had a bottom line total.
Thank you.
Oh, makes sense to me. Any other questions? Uh, make a motion, somebody make a motion?
I will move that we approve the, um, and the, uh, uh, account, the, the year-end transfers listed on a sheet provided to us tonight entitled General Fund End of Year Budget Transfers per MGL Chapter Forty-Four, Section Thirty-Three B.
May I just add that the total is eighty-five thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars in total?
Eighty-five thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars.
Thank you. Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, unanimous. Sign Halleck Point documents, do we have, we've already voted on it.
So you've already voted. I did put this on there. Um, I would ask that you just vote to sign the documents, because they are being recorded. Um, I have them over here, so there are two deeds. Um, as we discussed when the land, when the discussion came to town meeting, we will be technically buying it as two different items. One will be protected as conservation, one we will turn around and resell. Uh, so there's one deed for the six hundred and thirty thousand, which we will be selling, and there's one for the three hundred and seventy thousand that we will be keeping. Um, in addition to that, it is the formal easement that we agreed to under the executive session at our last meeting, I think. Um, so it's just those three documents, I would just ask that you, um, make a motion that you will sign the documents. The closing is happening on Thursday. Um, and then we are still working with the buyer to schedule that closing to, to then sell that property.
Right, okay. Okay, Jimmy, you wanna take that on?
I'll move that we execute the Halleck, Halleck Point closing documents made available to us by the town administrator tonight.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, great. Nice work, I'm moving that along. Um, okay, so, um, just to, we wanted to, since we had our planning, our strategic planning workshop last weekend, last week, sorry, not the weekend, um, wanted to just sort of go over it in terms of, uh, for, for the benefit of the public, sort of what we worked on, but also, um, sort of review for ourselves where we're at. Um, we, we got a lot done, I'm gonna find my notes in a moment. Essentially, you know, our, our sort of task was to start work on both the priorities and work plans for both the town administrator and, um, the Select Board for the next year. Part of that was trying to be clear on who, whose responsibility is what, and we had, we sort of acknowledged a lot of overlap that basically the town administrator, you know, takes on, you know, implementing things that we want to get done, basically, which seems very unfair, but, you know, that's, we just give her more work. So, um, but, um, but we did come up with a fairly long list of our own, um, sort of what we wanted to work on, and I think we still need to work on prioritizing and then creating some smart goals, some very specifics around, because some of them are pretty general, um, line items. Um, so in terms of tonight, I wasn't sure, um, oh, and then we also, we, we did discuss, um, the specific policy around recognition of events. Um, we had a great conversation about it, we still need to work on. Denise is gonna start working on, uh, trying to draft a, a policy based on our conversation. Um, and we've made some changes to the, um, ongoing Select Board agenda, um, where we'll always, um, be, um, having a section either during the board member comments or potentially a separate section that'll be recognitions. Um, so if people in the community want us to recognize, whether it's a, a special event or, you know, we do a lot of bike races, um, that we, uh, a lot of the bike races we end up having to vote on anyway. But, you know, there's things like, um, Autism Awareness Month and that sort of thing, um, that we would welcome that, um, information and, and share that with the community. And also things like, you know, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts doing any special projects. I mean, really, I mean, one of the benefits of being on TV for the Select Board is that a lot of people hear about us, that, or, or it gets reported in the newspaper, thank you, and needle, and Cindy. Um, so it's a great way to get the word out for, if there are things going on that people wanna, to share with the community. So, um, so that was, um, in a really quick nutshell, what we, we worked on last week. Um, we have a lot of work to do on policy, we're gonna essentially make sure every meeting has some amount of work time that we can focus on these bigger issues of strategic planning, and that's not just, um, you know, there are, like, the things we had to do tonight, which are all important, appointments and, and, you know, discussing policies with the police department or whoever, um, but we do want to keep some time aside to, um, review the policies. We do have, change some of the ones we have and then maybe write some new ones. So, um, that is sort of our, our goal and our, I guess, our commitment to ourselves, um, to, to make that part of our work throughout the year. Um, am I summarizing that well enough? In terms of where we were from last week?
I think so.
I think, so, so what I, in terms of tonight, um, I think, um, you know, we're not gonna spend time working on the priority list, though I think by, maybe at the next meeting, we should really talk about that, the longer list that was in the, the notes that Joyce did a, must have watched the video, because she did a really nice job writing it up. Um, uh, you know, the things that we talked about, um, because we really do need to make that a more workable work plan. I think there's, there's too much in it and, and maybe there's ways to combine things. But we did talk about, um, trying to, uh, the, the discussion we'd had a few meetings ago around the liaisons was, uh, that we want to, um, but we, that wasn't working. And we sort of agreed it, it hasn't been a system that was working particularly well. So we would like to meet more directly, as we did tonight with the Board of Health, with the different boards, um, in town, to have more of a complete conversation of board to board about, um, work plans, both their work plans and then how they intersect with the Select Board work plans. So, uh, we started with a calendar that Denise had of, of some of the things that are already scheduled. Um, and I'm not sure, I, when I looked at the town list of boards, I'm like, okay, there's like eighteen or twenty boards we might wanna meet with, so maybe that's more than we can handle. But, um, some of them are already in the sort of, the hopper, as it were. Um, we talked about having a joint boards meeting, um, in the budget kickoff mode, which would be with finance, capital planning, CPC, was there a third or a fourth one? And it was just those three? Was it, I guess it was just those three? Um, um, that we probably hope to schedule that for November, um, because that's really when, you know, before Denise really starts rolling out the, the budget process, um, for departments. We wanna have that conversation to get the context, and then we would probably meet with each of those, um, groups again, before we go to town meeting, obviously, to hear what their proposals are, whether it was capital planning or, particularly capital planning and, and, uh, CPC, I think, would be particularly needed before we go to town meeting, so that as a board, we know what's, what's coming up. So I don't, I don't, not sure how we want to address that scheduling issue, like, are there particular, I don't think, uh, the only other one that's really on the schedule already is the assessors, because we do the tax classification hearing, um, and also in November. Did, did folks have some sort of specific thoughts around specific committees? Do you think we should schedule sooner than later?
Um, I think planning. We should try and do a joint boards with planning. Um, and I don't know if it makes sense, to meet with them, sort of, or, I mean, they, they have budgetary implications in everything that they're doing.
Right.
Um, as far as, you know, different warrant articles and stuff. So I do think it's important to meet with them, at least once, probably, I would like to see them twice.
Well, and that raises, you know, if there's a special town meeting in the fall.
Right.
Clearly, we would wanna be meeting with them, I'm presuming it's, well, that's the Stowe Acres. Do we think that that's moving? Do we have any sense yet?
It's still ongoing. Um, they took a little hiatus after town meeting. Um, I think they, they started back up with conversations, I think they're having additional ones next week, um, trying to narrow down whether or not we will need a special town meeting or not.
Because I was thinking that too, that planning would be fall and spring, mostly.
Right, right.
So, yeah.
Um, I think it's worth, sorry.
Go ahead.
I think, um, it would be worth seeing the Lake Boone.
I think um it would be worth seeing the Lake Boone Association probably in the late spring or early spring. I think the school committee, we should meet with again, once, maybe twice. Um I do think that we can probably combine that with the Minuteman. Yes. Sorry, now I'm just trying to think of all the ones I'm a part of. Things like Trittown, I don't think we, there's no reason. That, because that literally is the point of Trittown, is to have one of us going there to do that. Yeah, so those are my thoughts on on those ones.
Any thoughts, you guys, specifics? I mean, I I printed out the list because I can never remember. You know, EDIC and sort of the Lower Village thing that we were talking about.
Right.
Would be a nice conversation at some point.
Yeah.
Council on Aging. I I mean, some of them, like, we had the great presentation from Tina and the library trustees or the library, and I think, you know, that that's just helpful, just to have that kind of, hear what they're doing. It's not like we have an agenda for them. We just want to know.
Right. Well, and again, I think it that's goes back to like our meetings are recorded. And so if we have a board coming before us, that's just another way for there to be transparency of like what's happening with that particular board in the town without. Yeah, so I don't.
Yeah. You guys have, yes.
I think this is the right way of of going about it. I I'm not sure that I have strong beliefs outside of our, the ones we've talked about. The the only one that I want to sort of caveat here is is both FinCom and capital planning because of our number one priority coming out of our strategic meeting regarding how we're going to go about planning for capital items. I think that we may need to be thinking about, you know, having read some of the other um strategic plans that other towns had that that Denise she provided us during that meeting, you know, seeing the capital planning and their and their FinComs, we're somewhat involved in this discussion, which I think makes complete sense and also ensures that we can understand what processes and uh, you know, thresholds and decision making, especially capital planning, you know, is undertaking in the committee. And, you know, I think first understanding that baseline and what that looks like in order for us to discuss, you know, whether that is the policy that this board would like uh to have moving forward, or would like to amend and update and sort of provide some, you know, maybe different uh guidance based on how we'd like to financially plan uh for capital projects moving forward. And so those are the only two that I want to caveat that we may ask if if they're willing to sort of help us in that process of understanding, you know, that. And I think it's important for both to be involved because they do play such a large role in projects uh moving forward to to sort of incorporate that into, you know, some sort of of maybe multi-step working plan as we're navigating our our number one, your our top priority.
Right. So so the question I have for you is, uh we had, we talked about it in November as the sort of budget kickoff. I guess the question is, do we want to do a separate, I mean, and I think like we'd hear again from capital planning and and finance um before the warrant gets closed. And so so the question is, do we want to have a separate meeting? Like more of a general, non-budget-specific scheduled meeting, do you think?
May I ask?
Yep.
So I, I think the answer is yes, but I think we're a step or two away from making that ask. And I don't want us to put the ask before we, as a board, get ourselves to that point where we have a more focused um goal in mind of what that should be. Because I would like to be cognizant of of both of those uh boards, you know, do spend significant time during the budget season, and so I want to be very cognizant that we're using their time, you know, very effectively and efficiently and and, you know, but I, on the other hand, in the counter event that I think is also important is they also have a lot of information and they also have a lot of uh memory and, you know, put in significant thought. And so I I don't want to also negate that. I want to make sure that that's being brought into our planning. But I think based on where we ended the conversation at our strategic plan, we're not, we're not quite there as a board yet to, I think, feel like we can have that conversation.
Yep, right, yep, I agree. That's great. So I'm I'm putting that as maybe a next meeting discussion that we can talk deeper about what that would be. Jim, do you have thoughts on that, since that's your sort of specialty?
Yeah, um like we said at our, so so I have two main points. Like we said at our our workshop, the charter already provides for a meeting with FinCom, capital, both school committees, assessors at the end of February. And I think we need to add one. We we talked about adding one sometime in November. I think any preliminary work we need to do to, and I do think we, I think this board needs to get up to speed on the overall picture. I think the town administrator can get us there.
Yeah.
It's sort of get us fluent enough to have an intelligent conversation. I want to go back to what, I'm I'm a little surprised to hear that there's potentially eighteen to twenty boards we might, and, right, I understand. But I'm I'm sort of chunking this in my head. I'm I'm listening to all of you, and I'm hearing there's three kinds of meetings. And we saw tonight that we need to be clear with the boards we're meeting with about why we're meeting with them. They they get a little nervous. They want to know what's on the agenda. Are they being called into the principal's office? Is this about something specific or is it about something in general? So uh there's three tiers that I'm hearing. It sounds to me like, by and large, with the school, other uh planning board, others, it's the sort of general update. What are you working on? What are you gonna be concentrating on this year? We need to know to do our jobs as chief executive officers. We're not trying to boss you around, because if we tried, we know we can't. Yes, in the course of this conversation, you're gonna hear some of our opinions. Deal with it. Um, you know, take it for what it's worth. That kind of give and take, much more like we've done with the library, I think. Those are fun, actually. Then another tier is this financial stuff, really targeted. I view it more as we're all trying to send the same message at town meeting, because we all look bad when we're on different pages. And the third tier is hot issue A is going on in town, and we need to get up to speed. That's been waste management, triple E, COVID, and that can come up at any time. And hopefully is rare. But I think we need to be clear with the boards that the default position is the first one.
Right.
Absolutely.
Because we're gonna run into a lot of boards that A are separately elected and don't care what we think. B are appointed and don't care what we think and don't have to when you go right down. C, run a library conservation land or wrecked land that by statute, we have no jurisdiction over. And we need to, we have to use soft power to the extent we want to have any influence there. But those are gonna be mostly that first tier of meetings.
Yeah.
That's good. I think, and I I think that's great, because I think that's how I've seen it. It's it's more of a, let's have you in. Again, let's look at things from ten thousand feet, because there are lots of, I mean, having sat with planning board for a couple of years, there are lots of things that were happening with them that that are, were coming down the pike multiple years later that were going to have a direct impact on X, Y, and Z. And so I think it's helpful. I view us as the most holistic kind of, you know.
Grand convener.
Basically, it's like, I just want to know what all is happening, not because I'm gonna like lay out proclamations or, you know, or whatever. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do know what you mean.
But I I I need to have all the information so that we can make a good decision. And I think that having those boards come forward and just say, this is all the information on what we're working for, great. That's going to inform what kind of policy we're going to be able to enact. And so I do think, I, but I do understand what you're saying as far as we just need to make sure that they're all aware that that's our ask, and it's not, you're coming in because you're in trouble, or because we're gonna try and do something to the way that you're running your board. We just, we need to have all the information so that we can do stuff, so.
There's a question we could start to ask, which is, how can we help you?
Well, basically, right? That's a, and that's an important one. Um, so, yeah.
Well, and also, as you were talking, I was thinking, like with planning board, you know, hearing their perspective on what's sort of down the road, not just this year, because we do get so caught up in this year, this budget, this town meeting, whatever, and not, so.
Because they are thinking multiple years in the future.
Well, like the accreditation. You know, knowing that that's a multi-year thing.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, so, yes.
It's a really critical point what you just said, and that is trying to not only convene for this year or this town meeting, but like, that's, I think, that that was the outcome I really felt that we got to at our last meeting, was how are we going to get that three, five-year plan? So like Denise doesn't continue to freak out of like, okay, there's a two and a half million dollar bridge. Where are we go? Like, that's what I want to try to get out in front of. So recognizing that we're in charge of the warrant and and doing the best we can, because some things are just going to happen, and of course, we can be, you know, adapt to it as as we need. But I really want to get ahead of that, and and, you know, I sort of realized that we were stretching certain budgets. You know, we got to your four and five even on FinCom, where you would just sort of see what that looked like, and you, you, some thought could go in, you knew that there was some flexibility. But like, knowing what that really looks like and helping us be knowledgeable about like how much error is really in your four and five. Is it, is it a true budget? You know, I know if we talked about, you know, Chief Landry and and the fire department, it's probably gonna be the the closest we're ever gonna get to like a budget you know what is coming down, based on the cycle. And I think knowing what that looks like, but then knowing where our big variables are, I think would be very helpful as we, you know, talk to them CPC and other boards that are making some financial decisions that really try to get this big picture of the town in play. And and I think my my goal is just that we can work together for United Stow to actually build that type of of plan, you know, and and not everyone's gonna be super happy with all of it, but I mean, the point is, is that we try to find that that common ground and build that. So, you know, my questions are, what do you think we need to know today? What do we need to know for tomorrow? How can we help you achieve your goals? And then I think a critical one for us after the board leaves is, do we disagree with, especially if it's an appointed board, do we disagree with the policy they may be trying to set as a board, or do we think that, you know, on the financial side, that it maybe needs to redirect? I think we have to have critical discussions, because I think that's important, and it's not criticizing them for doing their job, but it's thinking that large policy, you know, board that we are and trying to say, is this, is this moving in in the sort of overall direction we think we need to be going in? And having those tough conversations, you know, with Denise and and making sure we're we're getting to your goals and and that we're doing that. And and I think that's the fourth part, but I think that happens sort of upon reflection, not necessarily in the same meeting, but one that we should, you know, maybe put on the next agenda is really thinking about, you know, what were the outcomes of that meeting? Where, you know, are we all on the same page and letting ourselves sort of have that debrief, you know, even if it's five minutes of just hearing, I would love to hear from each person to know, hey, yeah, okay, we're on the same page. Or we may raise an issue that we all think we need to move forward on and, you know, make a motion that we want to continue that in in terms of our policies and and move forward, so.
Yep. So in terms of scheduling, I mean, I guess, I mean, I think.
Quick comment.
Okay.
You sort of skipped over assessors pretty quickly. That's a very important financial board. Because the economy's changed so much, housing prices have changed so much, and I've seen so many ups and downs. A lot of properties are selling hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred over assessed value right now. And how the assessors handle that, uh I'm getting a lot of calls from people asking if their taxes are gonna go through the roof because their neighbor's house went up so much. So there's a fear factor. So I think it does make sense to me with the assessors earlier than later. And also what the new growth is uh gonna be with all the new construction. I was curious what that would be. So after the first is a little late, I think.
Well, we meet with them in November.
That's why I was curious if it was actually November you chose.
The tax classification hearing has to be in, with the tax rate set.
Yep, yep, they do. How are they gonna manage the uh valuations this year?
Yeah, but I mean.
I mean, a lot of nervousness. I just wanted to make that uh bring that up.
I think, I mean, you know, the same thing as trash. It's it's a commodity. If assessments go up, taxes go down. I mean, you're still collecting the same amount of money. So if, you know, if assesses assessments go down, the tax rate goes up. I mean, it's just the nature of it, so they will adjust accordingly.
Explaining that to the public is really what I'm.
Yes, that's the annual problem.
People are nervous, particularly the people that have been residents a long time. They don't understand it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I I think that we've got some that we we already know are sort of on the schedule in terms of, and I guess, well, the new, you're bringing the the proposed climate or, I don't know what you're calling it, sustainable committee is the next meeting, right? So that's, that's one of the ones I marked. I mean, I, I I don't think there's really, we're not gonna meet with all eighteen or twenty. And that wasn't the whole list. I mean, I didn't pick everybody. I just, I mean, I think there's a few that, you know, in the library mode, like council and aging, I think, you know, it's helpful to hear for the whole group to hear what they're doing and, given that they're slowly reopening, I think it's too soon to ask them to come in, you know, wait till they're getting up and maybe, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, but I know that she's, the programs aren't gonna start up quite quickly.
No, they're not, but I think there's some confusion. You know, council and aging, it's not Allison and the department. There's a council and aging board. So they're not gonna be able to speak to specifics on programming and things like that, because they're.
Because I'm on that board.
But that's, you know, that's more departmental issues is when they're, you know, so yes, but council and aging did have a s- a soft opening, if you will. They're open. Um they're not scheduling a ton of activities. They had an ice cream social today. They're gonna try and work at a movie next week, but they're not doing their big classes until September, until they can really get a
Right.
A a handle on things.
But so it's, maybe it's a little more like with library, with Tina came and did the presentation, you know, maybe it's, it is Allison doing it. But because it's sort of a unique kind of, you know, even though, yes, it's it's your staff person, but it's it's the services that are offered that, I mean, you know, the board could do it, but I think it's, it would be more parallel to to Allison and Tina are the ones who could really do a presentation.
Right, but Tina doesn't work for the board, or me. Tina works for the library trustees, so she's not an employee bypassing the chain of command to come before this board.
All right.
I think we could certainly, you know, I mean, certainly something could be arranged, and if there's a specific program that um they want to touch upon. But I just, I want to be cautious with departments should not be coming here presenting certain things.
Okay. All right. Okay, so. So the other ones, I mean, I just, EDI, as I said before, EDIC and Lower Village seem to be one that would be um at some point. Now, I know we sort of agreed, Lower Village is actually a planning board subcommittee. But then working with the EDIC, it just seems like a a natural pairing um that we could have them both in at some point to talk about just sort of, again, their visions and their work plans for.
Yeah, and I think EDIC is a good one. They're struggling these days to actually have CORM. They've canceled the last few meetings because they're having difficulty. So that might be something of, you know, what can we do to help you? How can we recruit new members? Um, you know, how do we put the word out to business owners to participate in this type of um committee?
Yeah. Do people, I mean, ZBA, uh, recreation's another one, and especially with the commission to talk about sort of their work plan, their visions, I think, would be. And I don't think there's any timing particularly specific to them, because it is the commission, not not the staff. But um I know SMT wants to come talk to us at some point, but have a plan. So so I guess, I mean, I I guess I'm looking through the list saying, well, I think we just have to, you know, we'll keep talking about this and, you know, sort of have that. If we have a discussion next time around, more sort of in-depth around capital and, you know, what do we want to get from that process? And then we can figure out when the next, you know, how to to meet with whomever on that. Other thoughts on this? In terms of, do we just start plopping them into the schedule? I guess I, I guess I, well, maybe I, what I'll ask you all this is that you look through the list that, you know, if you look on the town, I just printed out the list from the the website. That's the town directory, and it includes departments as well as boards and committees, so, you know, just look at the committees. But, you know, and just if there's ones that jump out to you that you feel like right now are not on the schedule, or we haven't talked about that you'd like to get on the schedule, bring it next time, and then we can start scheduling.
Great.
And I think being really clear with them on what we're asking them to do is really important, and I made a point of doing that. And not everybody reads their email, so. I mean, I'm I'm as guilty of that as, since I missed that, the Joyce had done this, I missed the job on the minute, so I'm like the last one to criticize, so. So that's, that's where we at with the calendar. So the the continued policy discussion and and work plan and goals discussion, I mean, there's, there's a lot to do. I think we really do need to focus um on, you know, prioritizing. We we have a lot of steps to do after the work we started last week in terms of, you know, getting to the point where we're gonna start working on, you know, smart goals for a reasonable list of things, both for us as well as for Denise's um work plan for twenty, well, fiscal twenty-two. So um I don't know if people are ready to to sort of just have a, what time is it? A morning kind of thing? We have, how much left do we have on the agenda? We have year report and then minutes and then executive session. So um did people have, I mean, given that, Joy, you have the notes from last time that Joyce wrote up. Any initial thoughts about where we should go with the the sort of prioritizing our work plans or or next steps on the work plan? Bet you have an idea.
No, I don't. Maybe go first if you, if you'd like.
No, go, go for it.
I've been really thinking about what our number, what our first thing we need to do is, uh just because uh it was, it was a very high-level discussion that we had, and I know that, you know, the goal is to eventually get to really to the specifics. But um I'd, I'd very much like to make. But I, I very much like to make sure that in a reasonable timeframe to give Denise the most time that she has, which is setting specific goals for her and getting her work plan done. I know that we talked a lot about trying to connect that to our work plan. But I just think that our work plan is going to take more time. And I don't think that's a bad thing. I think that's just what it means to try to really get a process underway of how we can discuss policies. But I think we owe it to Denise to really try to get her some SMART goals that allow her to know what her, you know, what, know what the board's priorities are for her. So that way she can start to update what she's doing. Because I know that she is, has to be stretched at this point, being a year in and, you know, through COVID and, and just wanting that. And so I'd like to make that our, our number one. And that is, I'd like to talk very specific. I'd like to ensure that we're combining maybe a couple of things from our board of maybe where she could help. But in particular, I'd like to make sure that we're also doing things that she also is doing on the day to day or has been mandated by town meeting to do, such as, you know, HR stuff with the, with the ATA. And like, you know, actually making sure that we're following through and able to show off that Denise has not only hired somebody, she's worked through the policies, we've updated things. And, and, and I think that's also something I'd like to be in is, is at that level where we're also judging Denise based on her day to day and not just how she's going to help us on this board with our policies. Because I think that would be partially unfair to Denise because I think we may be a little slower. And I know that you move, you know, at a really nice pace very well, and I want, I want to reward that. And so part of it is finding out what that means. But also I'd like to make sure that what we're setting makes sense for what Denise is trying to do, you know. So HR is very much in Denise's realm. And so if she says my goals in HR this, this year, I think as a board, we could hold that accountable, right? And, and check in and make sure that, you know, we're that sounding board with her. So it's not that we're sort of stepping over her role in something like that, but we're really trying to say, what are you doing? Because we want to hold that as part of your evaluation and what your goals are. And then we can really, you know, reassess those goals and see how we did and see what the, any problems were. Maybe it was a board problem that we needed to update a policy and, and we were just too slow. And, and I think that's also helpful to do. So I see that as very much a conversation and really setting it with Denise to make sure that we're matching what she wants to do in this role as well. But out of everything, even though I have other things that I'd like to see move forward on our board, this is one that I think is just fair for us to do first. And then we should start to really take up some of the other ones that I think are, from a town perspective, especially the one in discussion of capital planning, critical. And so I see that as the board's first, but I think we owe it to Denise to do hers first and to get that to a point where we're in agreement.
So I, I totally agree. And I think, you know, when I look at the notes, you know, we actually did have somewhat of a finite list. And, and I think some of it was informed by what Denise said she was working on, but it's not specific. Like we needed to get to that SMART goal level. So, and not just for the benefit of everyone. We had started with Lower Village, which included financial oversight and meeting with the committee, human resources, the budget. The website morphed into increased communication. Then traffic and public safety, master plan launch and following through on the IG investigation. I'm just seeing from this, I think that's, those were the things that we came up with last week. So I, I would say that we, you know, that's a place to start that, I don't know Denise, if you have now, if you had things that we did that didn't get translated into that, that you want to add to that, but that we would then start working on the specifics of those, like getting more clear on. I think there's one, what I remember, one of the things you said last week when we were talking about the website was like, if our goal is to increase more transparency for the town, we're asking you to make sure our communication strategy essentially meets that. And that's, I mean, you've already started that and it's really, that's a continuing thing. But we could come up with, I think, with some specifics around within that, maybe it'd be the website or whatever, but.
Right, I mean, I think in order to, for both sides, in order to properly complete an evaluation of my work plan, there needs to be attainable goals. So just human resources is not a goal.
Right, exactly.
So yes, I mean, I think those are fine buckets to look at or topics. And then drill down into what the criteria is on those. You know, traffic and safety, you know, what, what is the goal for that plan? So that I have an understanding and then you have an expectation and then we can then evaluate those together.
Right.
And I think that was the discussion last week was that there needs to be, they need to be either quantifiable, attainable or just specific so that I know, so both sides know what's expected.
Right, right.
So for example, like traffic safety would be, the goal for Denise is establish a traffic and safety committee, apply for three grants. Like it would be those very speci, and I'm pulling numbers out of wherever. But it would be something very specific where at the end of it, and I do feel like we have a lot of this here. This is here. Like we just need to get it into buckets and just add like very specific, did you do this? Did you do this? Did you do that? Knowing that she's also doing the whole job of the, the town administrator. So I, I want to, as this is the first year that we're really doing a, we're proposing to do an evaluation of this, I do want to make sure that we're not hitting her with seventeen buckets on top of whatever, given the fact that we want all of these things to change. I do want to make them attainable goals. I do think that Denise is superwoman, so I do think that she's able to do a lot of this. But I, as a, as a board too, want to make sure that we're, we're not overextending her.
Absolutely.
And I feel like we all are in that.
Right.
However, so I think that if we wanted to, the way, when I used to work in nonprofit, we would, we would have to fill out these, basically, you know, start from scratch, what are your goals for the year? How are you going to hit them? We, and I'm not asking you to do this, we had to present them to our supervisors. They did not write ours for us. It was like, what do you want to achieve this year? We'll work with it, them together. We worked with, you know, our supervisors to figure out if it was, if we could get something down on paper that they could evaluate us.
Right.
And so, yeah, so that's what, that's what we need to, to do for Denise. So I don't know. I don't know where to start.
Right.
Okay. I agree with everything you've said, except the part where you said that you weren't going to ask Denise to do the first draft.
I mean, is that what?
Well, hear me out.
Yeah.
I think you're exactly right. That's what I was thinking. When, when we do, I mean, the performance evaluation model now, the modern one, starts off with the, maybe a joint meeting or the employee coming up with their own goals. We're not dealing with an entry level professional here. We are dealing with someone who knows the day to day workings of this town better than we do. So I don't know, I think we did some fairly good work here by consolidating these things into the first paragraph under goals of the town administrator. If anything, I think it's, there are too many things. I'm not looking to add much to this.
Yeah.
But I don't know, feel free to tell me it's unreasonable. I don't know why it's unreasonable to say to Denise, why don't you take these things? Feel free to reorganize them if you have to and put under them what you think achievable goals are as a draft. It doesn't mean that we're just going to sign on to it.
Right, right.
But I am afraid that if we sit around and try to do this, we're going to be here all night.
Yeah.
Not tonight, but similar night.
Right.
I, it seems to me that that would be a good starting point.
Is that reasonable?
Well, I think that's fine. I mean, obviously I, you know, I, I've heard sort of where your concerns are and you have the, the targeted categories. And yes, I can certainly say, I mean, all of the categories we've talked about, as you've mentioned, things are already in motion. So I can certainly say, you know, I expect to have this done, this done, this done by the end of the year. I mean, I would recommend, so quite frankly, my first year is actually almost up. So I think, you know, we can't really evaluate, I mean, you can evaluate the first year based on just performance and whatnot. But it should be, you know, maybe it's a September first every year, we do the goals for my employment year. So we target a meeting, the end, maybe the last meeting in August to have the sort of performance evaluation, goal setting in one night where we talk about the prior year and then the upcoming year. So I can certainly have a draft of goals, you know, that's reasonable, that's manageable. And then we can talk about if that's the direction you expected to see, if there's a different goal or a different, you know, maybe the board had a different priority in one of those that they would really like to see instead of something or in addition to, I think that's fine. I mean, I, I agree. I mean, I know what sort of on my plate, I know what needs to come up. I know what happens during the time of year. So I, I, I would be fine with putting together a draft of, based on the categories that were discussed last week.
So under each category, there'd be two or three things, tasks. I wouldn't call them goals, I'd call them tasks, but.
Right, yeah.
And also make sure that I, that things that you're working on right now, that you have in motion are those tasks. Like it wouldn't be something, like if you, if you've already done some of the work that's going to complete it, I wouldn't want you to not like put, make sure the past steps are on whatever you're going to get to for the next steps. You know what I mean?
Right, well, obviously like HR, it's going to need to onboard an assistant TA to start implementing a procedure manual. I mean, there will be very specifics that quite frankly would have happened regardless of whether or not we had an ATA. I mean, starting an onboarding procedure, an employment packet. I mean, you know, when Frank asks for a packet, it's because I have to go in downstairs and find each individual piece of paper in a different file because there's not a packet to say, here you go. I mean, those things were going to change anyways.
So I think what would also be helpful for me then as we're evaluating you this year is if you would put together a draft of, these are the things that I accomplished this year, some of them. Because I think that that also is going to make, I mean, not that we're not aware of the things that you're doing, but I think it's also important for us to have that memorialized so that we can use that to build on everything moving forward.
Certainly. And I'm going to give you, quite frankly, the performance evaluation form that's been used here in the past is abysmal. I will be giving you some examples of other towns. Actually, Dawn Lowe over in Bolton has a good one that some of the surrounding towns have utilized and then changed to fit their town. So I think it needs to be a little more, there needs to be a little more evaluation done in the performance evaluation than what we've had in the past here.
Okay.
So I'll be giving you some examples of that too, to see what type of form and format you'd like to use.
Okay, so, so we're actually further along on that than I thought. As long as you're comfortable doing that. I mean, I, you know, we, we got that far. I guess we, we did come up with a, a list to start with, so. Yeah, okay. So, yeah, because I, I mean, I totally agree. That is our number one thing. We got to get that, you know, in motion so that we're ready to, to have that for you for your first.
Can I just add one thing?
Yes.
If, if helpful, I think, and this is obviously at your discretion, is, is having a prelim discussion of this before we get to that end of August discussion. So that way you can sort of hear from the board on, on where you're at, if, if that's helpful, especially since this is the first one. Of sort of saying like, am I in the ballpark? Am I not in the ballpark? Or, you know, is this enough sort of foundation? Because I do see this as a great way for also the, you know, the community to see what you're doing. And so this is a way for us to make sure that, that it's just out there and, and people see like, this is, you're actually doing a crazy amount. Because I think sometimes people make a phone call and say, what is she doing?
Here.
Right, and so this is a way for us to make sure that it's very transparent on, this is how much you've actually accomplished for our town. This is where you're going. And maybe not just necessarily tasks. I would love to see an aspirational thing, like, and if I could stretch on this, this is where I'd want to go. Because that also helps us know where you're going for the next year's goals and to know whether there's a policy something, right? If it's, my aspiration is really trying to get to reviewing the website, but it's, I know it's a big task and I'm just not comfortable setting it as a task. But knowing that's where you're going, do we need to talk about a town warrant article? Do we need to, you know, weigh in on, on what this looks like for a website review and a proper one? Like it gets us involved in, in that discussion too, where we're supposed to be in your sort of work plan. So if there is something like that that you do see, I would love to see that just because I think it helps us know that direction of where you're going. And it may be that we get to the next year and go, well, that was a funny goal a year ago, wasn't it? I don't think we are. I think that you're moving in that direction and you know where you want to go. And, and I think having some of that vision here would be helpful as we try to make sure we're being helpful to you as well.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's, that's good for tonight. So, and, and I will hope that we can take some time next week, our next meeting to talk about the whole capital, the, the sort of issue that we raised around, you know, policy around, or, or not just policy, what role we want to play in the capital spending world and, and what do we need to know, you know, from the various committees that are more embedded in that before we start planning that meeting with them? So. That makes sense.
May I ask a question specifically about the strategic planning? I noticed that we still have some select board committee assignments that were left open to be appointed.
Right.
Are, are we going to put that on the, the next agenda?
I thought we'd put on the next agenda? Yeah, because there's, there's what, three? I did, I did take it and I didn't write it down, but, yeah.
Yeah, because we just had, because capital planning was one of them. That's why we wanted to make sure that we, we had fulfilled that.
Right, right. All right, so moving on, town administrators' report.
Okay. So Mass DOT has announced that the Gleesondale Road, Gleesondale Road from Sudbury Road to Marlborough Road will be closed overnight on Thursday, July fifteenth to allow Hudson Light and Power to relocate utilities on the bridge before we start the full construction. It will be closed from ten PM on Thursday to six AM on Friday. There will be detours in place and apologies for confusion. When Mass DOT put out the initial press release, they had the wrong detours. So the updated information is on our website. It will be closed from Sudbury Road to Marlborough. The detour route is depicted in a map and in verbiage on our website. So please keep an eye on that. I will say to the residents in that area, Hudson Light and Power has told us that everyone received a letter. They are shutting power off to the area. So there's a large section of town that will not have power overnight, Thursday night. We've been told they've all been notified, but just as a reminder, there will be a portion of Gleesondale that will not have power Thursday evening. Starting this week, we are going to be closing the gate at Pine Bluff on Friday and Saturday nights. There have been some complaints of activity that's been taking place down there. I met with Laura and Mike yesterday to talk about the beach and some options that we have. We decided that it's not necessary to close it every night of the week. It seems to be isolated to weekends. So the police are actually going to close the gate, start of the overnight shift about eleven o'clock and then the morning shift will open it up, see how that is with activity. They will obviously still patrol the area, but hopefully this will keep out and stop some of the antics that are taking place. In discussion with them, there will be a capital project that we hope to move forward with cameras for the Pine Bluff area. You know, in my prior community, we had cameras in different parks and public areas around town that fed right back to police dispatch. They could just keep an eye on the monitor, see if there's any activity going down there. Again, it just helps deter some things. There have been some needles found at Pine Bluff at night, some other inappropriate items found that, you know, we don't want these things taking place on town property. So we will be looking to do some cameras, some updated internet access at Pine Bluff. And actually, Community Park, the cameras down there are very outdated and not working well. So we'll probably be putting forward a capital item for cameras overall in those locations that the police would have access to, to keep an eye on things overnight. And then some really amazing news that I still can't quite wrap my head around. A few months ago, Congresswoman Laurie Trhan's office sent a notice out about a federal community project funding opportunity. The program is for small community-based infrastructure projects of less than a million dollars. Back in April, I submitted a request for funding for improvements to track road, to connect the Assabit Trail, possible access to the train stations. When I was on vacation in April, they needed additional information. So Jesse and the Planning Department, actually with the help of Jim, provided some letters of recommendation on the project, additional information, project timeline, et cetera. Last night, Congresswoman Trhan called me personally on my cell phone to tell me that the Appropriations Committee approved seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this project. We still need, we still need funding approval from the Senate, but it is a huge win for us. And Rep. Trhan feels that we're in good position for funding. And she actually said, I hope to be cutting a check to you very soon. So it is amazing news. I told her it would really be a game changer here, that, you know, this project would not be done otherwise. So I just, you know, I thanked her profusely for her support on this. And I don't know, it was a very quick turnaround. So I said to Jesse, maybe no one else applied for projects. I don't know. It just seems, it's just so amazing.
During town meeting season, people were too busy, you know?
I don't think that's the case at all.
Really?
I, I mean, what I, so I had heard about this at a Mass Bike meeting. And each district was asked, each congressional district was asked for ten projects. Not that they want to fund ten projects, but I think every district has a project. And I don't think she had any lack of takers. And I think as you. and I think, as you pointed out, the fact that Track Road um kinda connects two towns is heads toward a train station. Um, I think the fact that it is this unique challenge of, it's not just a bike trail, but it's bikes and cars. You have to help bikes and cars live together. Um, I think this is amazing what what Denise and Jesse did. Um, you know, they they pulled this together in less than a week. Uh, uh, inquiry or a a an application had been made to Congresswoman Trhan's office in less than a week. Um, and we had to gather all these letters of recommendation from stove, neighboring towns and everything. We thought it was a Hail Mary, um, but, you know, great work on the part of Denise and Jesse. Um, and in terms of strategic planning, I I was biting my tongue. When we meet with the planning board, this board has to get familiar. We might have to do a sidewalk down at Track Road so that the rest of you understand what challenges are down there. And we should do it on a day like we just had, right after rain. You'll be horrified. Um, I biked it on a day like today and I almost killed myself. Um.
I run over there. It's.
Yeah.
It's pretty bad, especially the part from Crow Island to Sudbury.
Yeah.
But the challenge for the planning board in particular is gonna be to figure out what to do with this. Um, having bikes and cars live together and something like that is not gonna be easy, but it's just great work.
That's really exciting. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That.
Um, well, and again, hopefully it comes to fruition. She seemed very positive. Um, I mean, I I I called Jim cause I needed to tell somebody right away. And um, I was giggling, he was giggling. It was, I said, I thought it was a robocall until she kept talking. I mean, it was like, Laurie Trhan, and I was like, okay. And then she kept going. So I think the fact that she took the opportunity to call, I mean, she was really excited about it. She kept saying how much of a win it was. Um, so again, I think it's a great, it's a great opportunity. Um, so hopefully, hopefully that will come to fruition. Um, along similar lines, but not quite as exciting. Um, I did talk to, as a follow up to your meeting with Jamie Eldridge, I talked to Kate Hogan yesterday. Um, I'm going to put together a meeting of um, a few of us, um, probably Megan, Ellen. Um, it's nothing to be posted. It's not gonna be a posted meeting. Um, a couple of department heads talking about some ongoing projects, Lower Village, PFAS, um, the transportation issues in town, to really see what our core issues are and what the state can do to assist us, if anything. Um, I think it's a good opportunity to have some ongoing co- uh conversations. Um, you know, one of them Harvard Road, the flooding issue, um, it goes well beyond anything that's in our purview. Um, it really falls on, you know, some private entities, things like that. So, um, you know, what can the state do to help us, if anything? They're getting phone calls on certain matters. Um, you know, people in town had problems with waste management. They called them. The flooding, they're calling them. So it's just an opportunity to sort of update the state, see where we are, see what we need from them and so on. So, um, we're gonna be looking for sometime in August for that meeting, so I'll let you guys know. But um, that will be coming down the line again, just to continue to use some resources. Um.
I, in the past, it seemed like there was sort of an annual meeting that that Jamie and, or the Senator and the State Rep would come to the slide board.
Yeah, I think we s-
Well, they came a few months ago.
A few, it was a few meetings ago. It was on Zoom. They were both on.
A few minutes ago, like, like.
I don't know.
It was like April.
It was not super long ago, though.
Maybe, yeah.
Was I, really? Oh, my god, my brain, okay.
Yeah, they gave an update about the budget and where things stood in the state.
But it wasn't more, it wasn't su- it wasn't interactive.
It was not interactive. It was a presentation that they each did. It wasn't like, uh, we're gonna sit down and have a discussion, like.
No, I mean, I I like, I think this is far more effective.
Yeah, I think, um, and, you know, so Kate had um put in an earmark for money for us, for PFAS remediation for this facility. Um, she thinks that has a strong chance of um going through. Um, we've talked about last year's earmark for money for the transportation shuttle.
Mm-hmm.
You know, where that is in the process. Um, we still don't see the need for it just yet, but we do anticipate in the future that we will need that. So again, just to kind of have those conversations, I think that would be helpful.
No, that's, that's great.
Um, and I think, um, I think that is everything I have. Um, gonna start interviewing for the assistant TA. I'm gonna start the fire chief process soon. Um, that's about it.
Um, the committee list of openings, um, is that up? I I looked up the website and hadn't, you said you were gonna try to come up with with a little more descriptions for the openings?
Yeah, so no. So Phoebe is gonna post all the vacancies.
Okay.
I I I need to get to a point that I have time to actually.
Well, do you need to do it? I mean, there's other people, we could do it.
No, I mean, I can certainly assign folks to do it, but I think, you know, I have something specific in mind that I wanna put out for this um outreach.
Okay.
Um, so I can certainly task someone with putting a draft together and and building the framework for it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but in the meantime, Phoebe is just gonna get them posted so that it's out there and um with our posting requirements that we have.
I mean, it's summer, so it's not a great time to get people's attention, but I just would love to see if we can get people in by September.
Yep.
Okay.
Did you wanna mention that the library building committee selected a vendor?
Oh.
I can. Uh, library building committee selected a vendor. Um, they met last Wednesday. Uh, so previously they conducted five inter- five?
Five.
Five interviews. They received proposals from, I think, na- uh,
Eight.
Eight, uh, narrowed it down to five, had five interviews, um, decided not to select their top three, selected the one. They were pretty unanimous on the one that they selected, which is Design Lab. Um, and decided to defer their second and third choice if I could not come to contract arrangements with their top choice. Um, they have been notified. They're excited to work with us. I I don't see any issue with coming to um a contract with them. Um, I have it half drafted right now, so I'll get that out to them and they're looking forward to starting. So that project will get underway shortly. I think that's it.
Okay. Um, okay, uh, minutes. We've got uh June twenty second and then we've got last week. Um, any comments, corrections on June twenty second?
Page four, did the chair really make a motion?
Yes.
Did I?
Okay. I mean, it's not illegal or anything.
Oh, I did. You know, I think because, I don't know why I did, but I did. Whoa, crazy. Slap me out, anyway.
Madam Chair, you were.
I think, cause I wasn't nomi- I wasn't one of those people. That's why I was making the motion. Cause everybody else was.
Oh, maybe.
所以我, so.
Oh.
That would make sense. Any other questions, comments? If not, I will take a motion to approve.
Then Cheryl, we approve the minutes of the June twenty second, twenty twenty one meeting.
Have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Mm-mm.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. And then July sixth. I can't say I picked up on the changes that you said she added something from the book charts or something, but they seem pretty.
She did a great job.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, she just added a few things. She, she really took those pages and made sure everything that was on them is in the minutes.
So you could throw them away.
You're not gonna hang them in your office?
One of those looked at piles that just seems.
I thought you agreed to hang them in your office.
I just missed that.
You can use them as curtains. Uh, yeah. Okay, so um, any questions or comments on the July sixth minutes? No. Take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move, we approve the minutes of the July sixth, twenty twenty one special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, done with that. Um, correspondence.
Uh.
Yes.
I had one thing on correspondence and I just wanna check with Denise. The letters that are coming to us about NANS are also going to the planning board, correct?
Well, so they're, these are regarding phase two and the liquor license process. So they're, they're expecting that.
Is that, oh.
NANS will have to come before you all to expand their liquor license.
But I thought that.
For outdoor seating.
What they were talking about was outdoor seating.
But outdoor seating will include alcohol.
Oh, okay.
Their current license does not, so that's why, so the, the planning board was expecting to approve their permit tonight. They were hoping to wrap up the decision this evening with them.
Okay.
And in the decision, it will, they will be remanded back to this board to expand their liquor license if they choose to use.
I was totally confused why we were getting these. Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and so their permit, um, right now, do they have any outdoor seating permitted?
Not in their liquor license.
But, but any, if they, are they allowed to have any outdoor seating without liquor?
Did we approve that?
No, so you don't approve, so that's what the planning board is, they extended.
I thought that was like our temporary approval. Didn't we approve some outdoor seating for them? As part, like, I thought that that was like a COVID thing, yes.
As part of the COVID temporary, so it may have been, um, but the temporary restrictions had to be permanently um implemented before the restrictions expired.
Got it.
Um, they were looking for, um, they're looking for a few things and there has been some, what I hear, conversation on Facebook about it and some of the letters have articulated it that, um, they are trying to get streetlights and they're not allowed. No one's requested a streetlight. So, you know, I think there's sort of a break in the process that it's been conversation that's been taking place at the planning board, that is being misconstrued as denials of things when the planning board can't grant a streetlight, this board has to grant a streetlight. And that has not come before you, nor has any request come before you.
Right, right.
So I think it's, you know, it'll be better when the decision is finalized from the planning board and then it specifically outlines what they're allowed to do and what their next steps are, including coming to this board for the next round of sort of permissions to
Oh, really, really.
do what they're looking to do.
Got it.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't know. Was there any other questions about, um?
No, that was all I had.
I think that was the only course. Well, there was one, part of appeals, but that was it. Anything else? No. Okay. All right. So we are now gonna move into executive session um to conduct a strategic session in preparation for contract renewal with the treasurer collector. Uh, so. I.
Just removed.
Okay, and we're gonna do a roll call to go into executive session with the.
Second.
Jurn, adjourn.
Yes, directly following the, yes. Um, okay, so roll call, uh, Jim.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Megan.
Yes.
Ellen, yes. Okay, we are now in executive session.
But let's just, let's close out the Zoom and.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Bye-bye Zoom.